All right, I am going to call to order the council meeting on November 9th, 2021 at 7:01. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herps?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman? She muted? I know she's.
You're muted, Shannon.
She's here.
She's here.
There you go.
Alder Udell?
Sorry, sometimes I can't get the button fast enough.
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, first up tonight is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Jill, I heard him first. Second by... Jay, you want to second it at least? All right, second by Jay. Anything that people want to remove, Julia?
Yeah, number eight.
Resolution 21621?
Yes, correct.
All right, Gabrielle?
Um, two, resolution 21921.
Number nine, okay.
Oh, nineteen. Oh, it's number nine.
Yeah, number nine, yeah, yeah. All right, anything else? Someone wants to separate? Seeing nothing else. All in favor of approving everything except for eight and nine, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay?
Nay.
All right, that passes. Uh, let's see, Julia, number eight.
Yes, I would like to refer this to personal committee, too.
All right, so would you like to make a motion adding that?
Oh, um, I'm, um, I move appro, um, I move to, um, to refer to personal committee resolution R dash 216 dash 21.
Second.
Signed by Gabrielle, so we're adding personnel to the list of things referred. Yes, any discussion? Yeah, question, yeah, Chad.
Personnel committee is tomorrow at 4:30. Will this be able to be discussed then, or will it need to wait until January if not discussed?
It would have to wait because it's too late to get on the agenda. No, it's within 24 hours, under 24 hours.
I believe that all of these, um, you know, um, there is a related, is a personnel-related matter, so it should go to personnel.
The only issue I would say is that it's the library and they kind of can do whatever they want. They don't have to get our approval. They kind of, they get their money and they, if they want to do this, they can. If they want to do something else, they can. And really, we can't tell them no.
Okay, so no.
So, are you?
I, I am withdrawing this.
All right, so withdraw, so then we still just needed an approval as is. Someone wants to make a motion to approve as is?
So moved.
Moved by Jay?
Second.
Second.
Signed in by, I think that was Dave. All in favor of approving as is, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? And that is approved. Gabrielle?
Yeah, for 21921, I guess this is more of a question. You know, given the expansion of the urban service area, are there any other committees that, that... Seems like a big deal. It seems like only going to plan commission seems like not enough. I don't know. It should have gone to Public Works or one of the other commissions because with the expansion of the urban service area, I imagine there might be infrastructure improvements. I just.
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah, so it's a multi-step process and this is kind of that first step, but they will absolutely need to get things like Public Works approved, infrastructure. Um, you know, financial development, there's going to be possibly parkland necessary. There, I've been one for this actually, but, uh, there's, so there'll be a lot of process steps they have to go through. And during those steps, of those other committees kind of review this and take a look at it and provide their feedback as well. Based on what I know about it, I mean, it's something even I could see something like RCC getting involved in because of all the wetland management that they're going to be doing as part of that. But they don't have those, that part of the plan ready yet and done yet, but that will be part of it in a future step.
Okay. All right, and I just have another question. I know Edgewood's been doing some public meetings that they host. Is the city going to host public meetings? Or are we co-hosting those? I mean, this seems like, it just seems like a, I understand that it's a project that has a lot of support, but, um, it seems like a significant change to the, the, the comp plan, so.
Well, I guess the, actually, that's how it works for all developments, is that the developer actually holds the public meeting. Yeah, yeah. Jim?
Well, Randy and I did attend the first public meeting and this is just the first step. There would be more steps in this process. So we got an initial, um, look at the plans. Randy and I asked a lot of questions, especially about stormwater, so they know where we're coming from. So this is just the first step.
I will move to approve, to move to refer as is.
All right, it's your second.
Second.
Signed by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that is approved. Uh, let's see, then we go all the way to adminis, wait, actually, no, we have new business first. Throwing me off a little bit with the changes on the agenda here. All right, uh, Randy, this looks like this finance thing. Would you like to do a motion?
Uh, yes, um, motion to approve resolution R dash 217 dash 21, resolution awarding the sale of $15,505,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2021A.
All right, signed by Julia. Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and then do you want to speak to this? Do you want Misty to? Do you want Greg from Ellers?
I'd like to start out with Misty and then she can.
All right. All right, Misty, go ahead.
Yes, we spent quite a bit of time on the sale day results today in finance committee. I'm not sure if council's interested in that same level of detail. But Greg is available to provide that if you'd like. End of the day, we had our sale today. Rates turned out great, so really happy with the results. So I'm looking to this body if you want more details or not. Uh, the big thing to note, though, is the resolution that was originally included in the packet was kind of the draft resolution that would vary depending on what happened this morning. The packet was updated, thank you Tracy, to include the final resolution. And that's why the dollar amount that Randy spoke was a little bit different.
All right, any other questions or comments at all? Yeah, Julia?
So what we are covering with this, um, um, ah, with this resolution, the $50 million, what is the project that they are, we're trying to fund?
Yep, so it is the Sine Road project, at least a bulk of it, not all of it, but the bulk of it. And then a lot of the water, uh, stormwater and road at Seminole and Lacey. So the Lacey Road reconstruction, the intersection, the stormwater for the roads.
Oh.
That's needed.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that is approved. Thank you, Greg. That was an easy one for you. All right, emissaries report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items of notes, uh, mostly related to events and road construction. Uh, Sine Road, uh, repaving should be complete this week. And then, uh, our highway department and other road construction folks will be going in next week to finish off the shoulder work. And then we would anticipate that, uh, that road will be reopened. Fish Hatchery Road, uh, final steps for this year are wrapping up. And in fact, there is going to be a Fish Hatchery Road reconstruction reopening event on November 17th at 1:00 PM. Uh, that event will be held at the Terrace Point Apartment Building, uh, located on Fish Hatchery Road at Bowman, um, Bowman Drive, Bowman Circle. And then the other item, two other items I have, uh, the Senior Center is hosting its Veterans Day program this Thursday at 11:00 AM. And the Police Department is kicking off its annual food drive. And there will be a collection barrel in the City Hall lobby available through December 3rd for anyone, uh, from the public that would like to donate any food items to that drive. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, any questions? All right, uh, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, um, Chad, this is more of an informational, um, we had an incident this week where one resident made a malicious call on another one that resulted in our fire department being dispatched. And it's a, um, I guess, however I say, it's a, it's a, it's a dispute, but it was a malicious call. Do we have any means to back bill that person that made that call for that unnecessary dispatch of the fire department, uh, to this event?
How about we chat about that? I don't have any details on the particular situation at all, Dave, so I'll talk with the fire chief. And, uh, I'll reach back out to you and see what we have for circumstances and what, if any, uh, available options.
Thank you, Chad.
You bet.
All right, seeing nothing else, uh, we will go to Plan Commission. Randy?
Okay. Motion to approve resolution R dash 220 dash 21, CDP dash 2406 dash 21. Approving Comprehensive Development Plan Request, CDP dash 2406 dash 21. By Brian Munson, agent for Fehe Land LLC and Fehe 5370 LLC. To allow for a single-family and multifamily residential development with a school site on property located South Noble Drive in section, uh, 15. Out lot eight, Fehe Fields and part of lot two, uh, CSM 9896.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Parks Commission approve? Julia?
Yes.
All right, excellent. And we've got some people here applicants to speak. We've got Chris Ellers, Brian Munson. Dan Day, uh, Grant Emel. And you got David Vehe who was registered in support as well. All right, I'll let you go ahead.
All right, good evening, Council and Mayor. Thanks for having us here tonight. Um, we're very excited to kind of share with you what our newest and, and, uh, best development that we can lay forward here in Fitchburg is. Uh, we've been searching for some time for an opportunity within Fitchburg to kind of roll out our, our new master plan community model that, that has really taken shape in places such as Verona, Wanaquie, and Madison. And what it is, is it's a newer way of, of planning with an economically diverse housing mix all within the same neighborhood. So unlike what we're accustomed to where you have clusters of houses that are about all the same price point lumped together and different people at different stages in their life, all segregated, this is really an inclusionary development that really diversifies the product mix and price points from a number of different levels. So I'll get into more detail here shortly, uh, as we get going here. With me tonight is Brian Munson from Vandewall and Associates. He's a planner. Uh, and then, uh, to my left is Dan Day, longtime engineer with Veridian. Uh, myself, I'm Chris Sellers with Veridian Homes. Building homes that enrich lives and, um, uh, build dreams. That's our, our vision and that's something that we, we do take to heart. And it's something that we put in every house that we do build.
Can we bill him for the ad?
We have to preface the presentation here. We do have a motto. We stick true to that motto, uh, as we go through every house that we build. Within each development that Veridian does, uh, there are three guiding principles. First, housing variety, something that again, we're very excited to roll out with, with a little more land in front of us. Uh, what you've seen on the other side of town, which is Creston Crossing, we're kind of boxed in by limited acreage and, and only could build our attainable type, uh, product. Now that we're working with the Fehe family and have access to much more acreage, uh, we're going to expand that model to have housing with a variety of price points everywhere from entry level, first time move up, second time move up, uh, to luxury and even downsizer. Vibrancy, uh, we are coming in with, with a lot of different floor plans, over a thousand floor plans and 700 different elevations. There will be a, a very diverse mix of housing in this neighborhood, uh, as well as color schemes, elevations, and architecture. And then finally, sustainability. Beyond the houses themselves, we work to, uh, develop and incorporate, um, stormwater management programs that, that really exceed any other builder or developer that, that you'll see. We go above and beyond to work in our, uh, a part of the Green Tier Group along with some of the staff from Public Works in Fitchburg, uh, to really monitor ourselves on, on our stormwater practices and also work on a program that, um, puts the responsibility back on the developer when we do build our stormwater ponds to manage those ponds for the first couple of years until the city's ready, uh, for acceptance. So with me is Brian Munson. He'll get into a little more detail on what we're presenting tonight, uh, in the community in front of us.
Thank you, Chris. Again, just to get you oriented around, uh, the site, uh, here you can see the location just south of the Fehe Fields, uh, along the extension of Nobel. Zooming in a little bit closer, we've got a site that's entirely currently in agricultural production, uh, with rolling topography. And that's something we wanted to take into account as we designed this neighborhood, is how do we create a grid that both fits into the surrounding neighborhood, but also takes advantage of the site in a way that creates interest and character. Of course, as always, we start with what do the plans call for. And in this site, there's a blend of R1, uh, with a minimum density of five dwellings an acre and some R2, uh, with a minimum density of 10 dwellings an acre, and then accenting that institutional and parks and open space components. With that, we've developed a complete plan for the development of the site that spans 257 single-family homes, 12 attached twin homes. So those are attached, single-family, for-sale product. Accenting that, we've got 228 multifamily homes in a variety of different configurations, as well as the five-acre school site. So really what you can see here is the, the flush, the complete, uh, road pattern and flushing out of the neighborhood plans that are adopted and guiding this site. As Chris mentioned, the goal of this neighborhood is to have true diversity of housing, everything from first-time home buyers all the way up to apartments and luxury housing, intermixed within the framework of a development. And since Veridian will be the developer builder, uh, they're able to deliver that price point diversity and floor plan diversity coupled up with architectural, uh, controls and site development details that will deliver the neighborhood in a way that, uh, is, makes for a unique, uh, overall approach. Just to walk through some of the components, and before I go too much further, I'd note, as always, when we present these neighborhoods in these presentations, all the photos in this presentation are from Veridian neighborhoods. So this is not an exercise in theory, this is an exercise in practice. We've been building these neighborhoods going on 20-plus years and are excited to bring them to this site. So as you see these photos, they aren't just representations of what could be. They are what is in other developments within the, the areas. So to start with our twin homes, we've got 12 market rate twin homes. And again, the goal of these is to offer for-sale product that would appeal to empty nesters and first-time home buyers. These will be owner-occupied, fee simple, so they'll have a lot lying down the center of the party wall. And again, it's an opportunity to diversify housing and transition the character from some of the adjoining uses. The Carriage Lane Single Family is sprinkled through the neighborhood, and this is some of the alley-accessed, uh, single-family of 136 different lots. And within those lots, we have diversity of size. They're not just one-size-fits-all. We have multiple lot sizes, which correlate to multiple different product types and allow us to offer price point diversity even within this category that will appeal to a lot of different home buyers. The interesting thing about these, these homes is that they're very comparable in scale and character to the front, traditional front loaded. Because if you took the garage from the side and simply moved it to the back, you roughly have the same living arrangements. The differential, of course, of the lot space is different, uh, and there will, it will appeal to different buyers and different price points. And that's why we try to intersperse these within the neighborhood and then balance, uh, with additional variety within the conventional single-family. In that realm, we've got 121 conventional single-family lots, again, offering more price point diversity, allowing us to span from that entry level all the way up to luxury housing and offer a transition to the neighborhood to the north, as well as the neighborhoods, the future neighborhoods, to the east. Careful controls on the architecture help us guide all of this. And that is really important for us. We want to focus the houses not on the cars and the garages, but focus it back on the porches and on the people. So when you look down the streets, you'll see careful design so that the garage is set back from the front facade, porches project forward. And again, creates a streetscape focused on the architecture rather than the fact that we have a room to store our cars in. These houses will continue that transition so we can offer opportunities that are different for home buyers that may be on some of the later phases on the southern edge that'll back up to Moraine Edge Park in the future. And then transition to some homes that'll be adjacent to the multifamily or adjacent to the school and offer price point diversity and format diversity. Some of the other components within the Comprehensive Development Plan include a multifamily component, which is response to the adopted plan in the northwest corner. And even within this 228 apartment, uh, project, uh, there'll be a range of unit sizes and formats. So there's both interior hallway apartments and townhome-style apartments. So this, this area will be divided by a street through the middle and offer some character transitions within the multifamily components as well. This will be seeking a separate review and approval, uh, after the CDP. Uh, we understand that they'll be seeking a plan unit development for this project. The school follows along, uh, the neighborhood plan as well, so a five-acre school site, which St. Ambrose Academy is pursuing and working on. And they'll be bringing a separate approval in front of this body as well. This will be zoned RL, uh, in the future. And they'll be bringing a conditional use approval, uh, to deliver their program and their approvals needed for the project. The final elements within the neighborhood, of course, are parks and open space. And here you can see an illustration of the various open spaces. It's something we presented to the Parks, uh, Commission and had a great conversation about the ability for these parks to offer, much like the housing, diversity of open space. Here you see parks that are consciously designed to be complementary to the fact that we have immediate access to McGaw Park. We have a trail connection that will loop from McGaw Park down to the stormwater in the south and back up to the existing trail to the northwest. So we're extending trails through this neighborhood and stringing together different open spaces that offer residents of this neighborhood and the community different experiences. The idea that we could have a tot lot, the 2.3-acre tot lot in the west side, offering, uh, sk, age-appropriate, uh, recreational opportunities at a smaller scale accents the fact that we have regional recreational immediately accessible to the site with the new pickleball courts and all the sports fields that are present in McGaw Park. The other elements offer some passive opportunities, so that trail corridor goes through some additional open space along the stormwater ponds with an idea that we can offer opportunities for residents to get out and walk. Uh, we found that whenever you have a loop system of trails, that the, the users, uh, you, sorry, the, the amount of people that utilize that facility increased greatly than when you have there and back. So we're excited to extend the loops that already exist within the greater neighborhood through this and offer up connections to the north, to the east, and then eventually even to the south, where we can see opportunities to tap into the Moraine Edge Park that's planned to ourself. Again, our opportunities that we're trying to develop in here is to offer both passive and active recreation for residents. And so really utilizing all of those spaces to expand the outdoor room. Uh, and we look forward to working closely, uh, with the community to design those. We've already had great conversations, uh, with the Parks Director about how to design these, implement these, and bring these online like every other piece of infrastructure for the neighborhood, right up front. We want to see these parks happen in the near term so that residents can look at those spaces and know that there's going to be a park. If not there, when they move in, it's coming within the matter of the next couple of months, hopefully, so that we can deliver these in a timely fashion for everyone to enjoy. Again, as I mentioned, we're excited about the trail and walking system that's going to have. We see this entire neighborhood being fitted out with sidewalks on both sides of every street, trail connections that extend the network and grid out beyond both the employment areas and connecting the parks and the neighborhoods, really something that'll be a great asset for the entire community. And the final piece is our stormwater management. As Chris mentioned, we take very close attention to how those are designed because we don't want those to be simply an engineered solution, but we see those as an opportunity for habitat restoration uh, and for creating passive outdoor rooms and experiences, uh, that people can enjoy as a, as part of their open space on an outdoor room rather than just a facility to deal with stormwater. They'll function great for stormwater purposes, but we really see the need to restore those in a way that makes habitat restoration opportunities and takes into account creating views and enjoyable outdoor spaces. So with that, we're excited to be here at one of the first steps. Um, we anticipate, of course, coming back and submitting very shortly with a preliminary plat and a plan unit development and additional zoning, uh, requests to implement the next steps so that we can move in towards the final plotting stage with a goal towards breaking ground next year. So we're excited to move forward through the process and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, Jay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions. The, I realize you're not coming in for the approval for the multifamily piece tonight. Um, but the way it's situated on here and looking at the other maps, it appears that, um, for that to function correctly, it's going to have to be coordinated with whatever happens on the piece of property to the west. Have you had any conversations with them as you, whoever, I don't know who owns that parcel, but have you had any conversations with them about how this might all work together?
Uh, we've not. Uh, there is a residential transition to our west, uh, and we've had some conversations with city staff in terms of how the roads, uh, alignments work, how the stormwater management coming from the west has to work. Uh, so it is something that'll be coordinated closely and does not preclude the development of the properties west of us. Uh, and, and we anticipate, uh, that being able to come in seamlessly in the future.
Okay, in the, uh, in the northeast corner, there's a stormwater pond. Which, this says 2.2 acres, and since we aren't at the CDP yet, I, or the, you know, the, the plating yet, I'm sure we don't know exactly how big that's going to be. Um, but do we have an idea, any kind of idea as to, um, how, how close that, that the, the bounds of the actual pond are going to come to the, to the residential, um, parcels that are, that are near there?
Yeah, I can, is this on?
Yes, it's.
Okay, great. Yeah, um, so the, uh, the pond in the northeast corner is going to be made up of two, uh, two elements. And there will be a wet pond, uh, and then a dry pond for infiltration. Um, I would presume, I believe the way that it's being laid out right now is that the wet pond is going to be closer to the south end, to the existing homes, and that the infiltration basin will be on the north side of that. So yes, they will be a little bit closer, but those ponds will definitely be built with the safety, uh, guidelines that are all, that we do with all ponds uh, that are designed and implemented.
The, the reason I was asking that question is because we, um, when we were back doing the McGaw Neighborhood Plan, one of the things that we talked about was needing to have access to McGaw Park from different areas. And I see that you've left, I don't know, that's probably like, uh, maybe a 60-foot wide or 70-foot wide open spot there between a couple of the houses. Um, so my, my thought would be that at some point we may build a path through there. Uh, maybe not like an asphalt path, but maybe some, just some kind of gravel path to get from, because if there's large events that are happening at McKee Farms Park, it's very likely people will end up parking on the street in this neighborhood to walk over, so.
It's actually, I'm sorry for interrupting, but it's actually a key element of our whole path system. So that we are going to put that path in with the development that goes from the Notre Dame there to the northeast, to the trail that goes around the diamond, Ball Diamonds.
Great.
So it does fit between those homes real nicely and then snakes to the north of the, or north of the ponds to the northeast.
Okay, so I'll, I'll look forward to seeing that on the plat.
Yep.
Then the other question I had is I saw, uh, there's a condition about upsizing the Sine Interceptor. And I didn't look like Bill was on, on, uh, online tonight. But, um, so I, I, it appears that the Sine Interceptor is going to have to be upsized from 12 inches to 15 inches up to somewhere around Lacey Road. The question that I had is do we, do we, I don't remember what size the Sine Interceptor is north of Lacey Road.
So, um, from my brief research, and I'm not a total, um, totally know all of the elements of the, of the Fitchburg sanitary system, but the current pipe that goes underneath Lacey, my understanding is a 12-inch.
Right.
And it needs to be upsized to a 15.
Right.
They're going to do that as part of the reconstruction of Lacey Road is what they're going to do. So it's just one run of like 100 feet of sewer that needs to be, uh, upsized.
Well, my, my question is what is that connecting to?
Well, there's just.
It seems like we had a, either a 24 or a 30-inch.
I believe it's actually 36 going north of, yeah, it's 30 or 36 going north from that manhole, so.
That was the question.
Quite size, sizable.
That's all I've got right now.
Yep.
All right, uh, Julia?
Yes, so, um, so we have a great discussion regarding parks, um, you know, in our Parks Commission, so, um, I appreciate that, all the comment and all the thing that you're trying to incorporate here. My question is, you go to the map where you have the different phases, you know, you have phase one, phase two.
I don't know if I've got that one in here.
My question is, uh, um, it's a clarification po, question is, so in phase one, it's a 2022. So the only thing that's going to be built in 2022 is going to be the school?
Uh, no.
Or part of the other?
Right, so. Right, so the northern half of the multifamily would be built, and then a small area, the single family on the northeast corner would be built also.
About 18 to 24, a single family.
Okay.
For sure. We've got to bring a single family on next year. So yeah, we're still working through that.
Okay, my other question, I am an architect or an engineer, but the phase two has like a, can you put a map so everyone can see?
Unfortunately, I don't have it with me.
No?
We don't have the.
It's in the package. The phase two is for 23, 24, but it has like a weird shape, you know, like I don't know how you, you choose the way that you're going to build on the west side and then you go to south, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I want to understand.
Sure, it's, it's guided by a couple of pieces. First is the infrastructure needs, so making sure that the necessary connections are made for extension of sewer and water to serve all the components of the project, along with timing and getting the infrastructure in place for Stormwater Management, things like that. So that's one thing that guides it. The second is going to be delivering diversity of project, product within each phase. We want to make sure that we're able to continuously offer a variety of homes to purchasers within the neighborhood. So we don't want to take all, for example, and build all the alley product at once. We want to make sure we've got front load and alley, different lot sizes, different combinations, and some flexibility as we move forward because, you know, as we get into future phases, there will be that discussion of, well, we sold all of this product, so we want to maybe change the line and move in this direction. And so when we're putting that, it's kind of a moving jigsaw puzzle into the future, but we try to do it in a way that just continues to offer choices to buyers so we can appeal to as many different homebuyers as possible.
Okay. I have a follow up. So I have a follow up question. So you mentioned that you are going to try to offer diversity of housing, you know, and different levels, you know, from the first homeowner to, and then moving up to a bigger house. So can you give me an idea what are going to be the starting price for these houses?
Sure, it depends how efficiently we can move through the Pittsburgh process. I'll start there. That's the developer's side now, okay. Yes, the, again, by building different sized houses, you're going to have different price points. Assuming we can go according to plan and according to schedule with no big surprises, it's hard in a normal market, in normal times, I could, I could give you prices within $3,000 six months away, but there's, given what we've had with the spikes in lumber and then also windows and everything else, it's very hard to get to that point. I will say that we will, based on what we know from our land development costs and our housing costs, be in the low 300s, I'd say, and try to get under that 300,000 mark. If we can get to, if the price of material and lumber comes down next year, then yes, we'll be under 300,000 as an entry level price point, all the way up to probably about 700s in the, for the luxury side of it. So again, that's similar to what we're doing right now over in Verona with, which is what I compare this to, which had about the same land cost and everything else, infrastructure cost, but, you know, that's typically where we like to be. I can't give an exact number, but just more of a range of what we're, we're trying to target with that. And the reality is that's entry level housing price points today in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, it is.
I know it sounds like a lot, and it is, but again, given the median house price and, you know, is, is reaching 400,000, we're proud to be down that, in that level. Other questions at all?
My last one.
Dave, I think, has one.
Can you, question, you know, as I, as I look at these, I, I'm looking at the street layout and invariably, people appear before our public works and they complain about the speeding on their street, and they would like speed bumps or some, some traffic. And it's, it's typically the neighbors in the neighborhood that are speeding. And I would like, on this, I would, I would like you to work with our traffic engineer, try to identify, you know, where these might be and put in the, put in some speed control measures right off the get go so I don't have to deal with this down the road. There's one thing I'd say, you know, you say, well, we got short streets, work with our traffic engineer. I, I would like these assessed beforehand. It's a lot easier to put these in initially. And the second, you know, I, I'm not in planning, but as I look at this, this is more a question for council, what's the shortest distance anyone has to drive to get a gallon of milk from here? And I, I think it's two miles. You know, as in like every, to do anything, everyone's going to be shopping or anything, you know, they're, they're going to be having to get in their cars, you know, so that's, that's more a comment for, for council. I like the project, it looks like a very nice development. Thank you.
All right, Julia, do you have another comment?
Yes. On the street, I am looking up in the map, you know, in the northeast, that road there is going to be connected to Notre Dame and then going to Lacy, correct?
Eventually, that's the plan. Right now, it does not make that connection yet, north of Fahy Field.
Eventually, yeah, okay. And then, so to the west, where we are going to be connected to the west, all of this street there in the west, they are going to be connected to what road?
Sorry, Molly. Page about here.
Yeah, the roundabout of Nobel is right at the north end of the.
Yeah, okay.
Of the school site.
Yep.
But I.
Too many, sorry.
So now, on your west side, you're going to have like another road connecting to south to north to Novel Drive, or no?
Yes, eventually when the Bowman Farms develops, there's Micah Road that will extend to the south and could connect into the multiple street connections that we've stubbed out to the west.
Okay. Okay. That's all.
All right. Joe, all right, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I just want to second what Dave said about, like, making sure there's access to the basic things that people need as close as possible to the neighborhood, so we may need to think about that as we think kind of further through economic development. The other question I had, and I don't know who it's addressed to, but I know that in my neighborhood in particular, one of the reasons why there's such a socioeconomic diversity is, you know, habitat is one factor, but another is many of the people that live in the neighborhood have gotten either grants or loans if they're within a certain income bracket. Is there any plans within this neighborhood development to do that so that, you know, for folks that cannot afford a $300,000 home, you know, they, they can see a place in this, this community as well?
We do not have a financing mechanism in place, but I will say that we often are the first step for residents who do live in workforce housing. We are the first step for them to find a way to stop being a renter and purchase their first house because interest rates being, are what they are, it's actually cheaper to purchase an entry level house in this neighborhood than it is to rent a market rate apartment. So assuming interest rates can stay somewhat reasonable, which they should over the next year or so, that, that should condone itself to, yes, attracting those, those first time homeowners. But we have seen municipalities also set up programs to help that with, with people with the down payments for their houses as well, so it might be something worth looking at for Pittsburgh.
Yeah, absolutely. This was a question sort of beyond the developers. It's something, more of a statement to the council and the city as a whole, and the county if they're listening.
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved, thank you all.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, committee reports requiring attention, is there anything that can't wait until our meeting in two weeks in one of your committees that you need to mention? All right, looks like everyone's saying they can wait for two weeks, which is great. Then we can keep moving on to finance committee.
Okay, very good. Approval of bills, detailed review of all checks issued, checks number 122686 through 122746 for the period of October 16th through the 31st, 2021, totaling $2,657,487.47. Next item, 1B, detailed review of all ACH payments for the period of October 1st through the 31st, 2021, totaling $431,995.30. Next item, 1C, review of all P car transactions for the cycle ending October 6, 2021, total Moving on to item two, resolution and, excuse me, resolutions and ordinances. Resolution R-177-21, purchase of police department fleet vehicles.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Second.
Sent by Gabrielle, I'll give that one. Any questions or comments at all, or you want to speak to this, Randy?
I think we just turn it over to Misty.
All right, Misty.
Sure, and Chief Morales is here as well if you want to jump in. But ultimately included in the 2021 budget was the purchase of an additional fleet car in the police department. Generally, they would purchase a Traverse, which is a standard gas powered vehicle. This council seems to be interested in purchasing hybrid options instead. So what's in front of you is the purchase of a hybrid utility interceptor, a Ford vehicle instead. So there is a differential in the price there between the general Traverse we would purchase plus this higher level vehicle that's a hybrid. So the Traverse cost would come out of the regular police fleet budget, and that differential would come out of that hybrid cost, separate CIP project that we have, which is available to incentivize or make hybrid purchases available to departments. The other nice thing about this as the fleet vehicle is the department will be able to explore hybrids as a squad as a possible option in the future. So we're kind of tiptoeing into that possible future.
All right, any questions or comments? Gabrielle.
So I am so excited about this, as you all might imagine. I'm like, this is, I think this is officially the first hybrid vehicle the city will ever buy. I'm thrilled that the police department decided to use, take advantage of the hybrid electric vehicle fund. I know it's a big chunk of it, but that's what it's there for, you know, that's, let's just do it and let's, let's get a hybrid vehicle. And, and honestly, the police department is the most important department to get an energy efficient vehicle into because of the amount and the way that those vehicles are used. I mean, the budget, the gasoline budget for the, for the police department exceeds $100,000, I believe. So this is an amazing move. I'm really pleased that they, you know, I would, I would of course rather have it be a squad car, but I, I do appreciate the justification that we want to test it out, see how the equipment works with the staff vehicle in the anticipation that we can buy a squad vehicle in the near future. And this is the type of vehicle that we're probably going to pass down to another department when it becomes, you know, no longer operationally useful for the police department, and so then we're going to have a hybrid vehicle somewhere else in, in the city. So I'm thrilled about this. Thanks to the police department for, for taking the jump, and I cannot wait for an update. Chief Morales, I'd love to get an update from you once you have it going and how you're thinking about it and what the, what the opinion of the department is. As soon as you have information, I am eager to hear it. Thank you.
All right, maybe the bikes the police department has would be the only other hybrid vehicle that we have. All right, anything else? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Next one, Randy.
Motion to approve Resolution R-212-21, authorization to replace fire department staff vehicle.
Second.
Second by Jay. Do you want to speak to this one or have someone else?
We got Joe here, Chief Paul Vermaeker, can speak to it.
Go ahead, chief.
Given Alder Gerhardt's excitement about EVs and, and hybrid vehicles, I think we'll just purchase five right now. No, this is a replacement of one of our, our command vehicles. This actually came before you about a month and a half ago. We went to go place the order for the vehicle for 2021, and were informed that they were no longer in production. We moved to then purchase the 2022. There is no cost differential. Everything else remains the same with the exception of the fact that we have to purchase a 2022 vehicle. It will be a conventional vehicle.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that one's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one more, Randy.
Motion to approve Resolution R-214-21, approving the consent to assignment of lease from Phoenix LLC to Illuminated Holdings.
Second, second by Jay, and you want to speak to this or someone else?
Well, I guess I could make an attempt, as everybody knows, that Phoenix is in, is in TID 13, and we have a contract, the city that is, with, because of the TID bond, and Phoenix is merging with Shine, and it's just more of a housekeeping measure than anything else to clean things up with the merger. And Misty, do you want to add to that?
No, I think you did great.
Yeah, so essentially, we got to change the paperwork to say Shine instead of Phoenix because their merge is, the Shine is the parent company. Julia, and then Gabrielle.
I am reading here the, in the first, in the commission referendum sheet, and then they say mention that, that job will remain in Fitchburg for the duration of the term of the pay go bond. So is there is any indication that some of the job are going to be relocated to other place after the pay go bond is done?
No, not at all. In fact, they're continuing to add positions. There's no concern that they're going to reduce. That's just kind of in there to essentially say that you have to keep people while you're getting the pay go, but the all indications are that they're actually expanding their workforce right now.
Maybe they will remain, sounds like, you know what I mean?
It's legalese. Gabrielle?
I just want to say that for those that aren't aware, Shine Medical is a pretty extraordinary company. I believe their main facility is out of Janesville, and I feel very fortunate that they're here in Pittsburgh, and there's a lot of potential for the future of that company, and I'm very happy to have them here.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. All right, public appearances, non-giant items, new appointments. Before I open the public hearing, there is just one non-giant item that I do want to mention, and that is just, people in council know, some people in the public know, but just wanted to send my condolences out to the family of Rod Johnson, who was on our PFC. If you saw the article in newspapers, pretty phenomenal person, and he's done a lot of great stuff in the county. He was only on our PFC for a short period of time, but he was someone that I was very excited to have on there and was just a great asset to that PFC, but a greater asset to the community in general. So really wanted to just send our condolences out to his family on his unfortunate passing. With that, I will, I don't have anything else for non-giant items, but I will open the public hearing, and I've got a few people here to speak to that. I believe Bob Hillner, you'd be first, would like to come up. And just a reminder to all speakers tonight that we limit the remarks to three minutes.
Yeah. I'm Bob Hillner, and I'm here representing the Pittsburgh Senior Center friends in support of the senior center. And I know you're working on the 2022 budget, but I'm asking you to bear with me for just a few moments because I wanted to alert you to what the senior center will be asking for in the 2023 budget, and that is a bus. This is something that Jill McCone has held off on for many years for various reasons, but it's now gotten to a point where it's absolutely necessary that we, we have a bus in order to get the people who want to use the facility. The city now has four senior housing units and four more on the horizon, as well as taking over and the parts that are now Town of Madison will become part of the city of Pittsburgh, and we feel the people coming in that area will be wanting to use the facility of the senior center if they have a way to get there. And this is the real problem. The bus service to the, to the city now is only for the lunch period. Lunch period is just one activity of the many activities of the senior center. People who want to come for exercise or morning activities can't do it because there's no transportation. These are for people who don't have transportation for one reason or another. If they came on the bus for the lunch period, they can't stay for the afternoon because they'd have no way to get home. So this is what is really causing the, the center to consider having a bus in order to. in order to have people use the facility and take part in the many activities that the city, uh, senior center provides. So I just asking you to make a note and alert you to the twenty twenty three budget, there will be a request for a bus from the senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up I have Judith Stadler. And after that will be Sue, uh, Feber, but Judith, you are next.
Mr. Mayor, council, council members, I'm Judith Stadler and I live at five, six, two, nine Newton Street. I'm here to support Alder Gerhardt's amendment number ten, adding twenty five thousand dollars for sustainability planning. Over the past five years, the city has made great strides moving toward a clean energy future. Solar electric panels have been added to City Hall, the library, the Public Works Building and fire stations. The city passed a clean energy resolution in February of twenty nineteen and recently signed up for electricity generated by the O'Brien Solar Farm, nearly doubling city energy that comes from clean sources. What is needed now is a clear formal plan that outlines next steps towards sustainability with a timeline for getting there. A sustainability plan will define the scope of sustainability investments and establish priorities that could result in serious cost savings as the city continues to grow. Such a plan will be a much needed roadmap to a clean energy future. I urge you to join the other largest cities in Dane County and develop a sustainability plan for Fitchburg. I also support adding more trees and other plantings in the city because of their potential to sequester carbon. And to support that work, I support amendment nine, increasing the urban forester position to full time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sue, you are next. And after that will be Richard Roth.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. My name is Sue Feber. I live at twenty eight fifteen Jaclyn Drive in Tower Hill. And my husband and I have lived in Fitchburg for twenty years. I'm speaking to you today as the newest member of the city's tree advisory committee. But I want to be clear, I'm speaking as an individual and not representing the committee. I was pleased to be appointed to the TAC earlier this year. My first act upon appointment was to familiarize myself with the city's tree related goals and interests. I was happy to see that Fitchburg has a goal of becoming a tree city. I was further impressed by the city's goal of achieving thirty percent tree canopy in the developed areas. However, after participating in TAC meetings since my appointment, I received additional information. According to reports presented during our meetings, I have learned that despite the ambitious goals mentioned above, the budget for the urban forester naturalist position and the urban forestry function in general has either been held static or cut during the last few budget cycles. Because of the discrepancies I see between the city's stated goals and the city's financial support of the urban forestry function, I am here to strongly urge your approval of budget amendment number nine. I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
Oh, you're doing great.
Um, budget amendment number nine, which increases the forester naturalist position from point six FTE to one point oh. And amendment number thirteen, adding funds for tree planting. I have been amazed at the number of projects and activities current, currently being carried out by the urban forester naturalist as a point six FTE city employee. It's hard for me to imagine how this amount of work can be done within the limitations of that position. And much more work needs to be done if the city truly wants to see progress toward its tree related goals. Adoption of budget amendments number nine and thirteen will go a long way toward meeting the current and future needs of the urban forestry area. In summary, let me say this. The city has publicly stated some ambitious tree related goals. I urge you now to put your money where your mouth is. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, uh, Richard Roth, and after that will be Stephen Wunsch.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Richard Roth. I reside at twenty eight sixty nine Crinkle Road Drive in the city of Fitchburg. I've been a resident of the city of Fitchburg since nineteen eighty four and a member of the fire department since nineteen eighty seven. I'm here tonight representing myself. Unfortunately, I'm in uniform because I just got off a ten hour shift. Didn't have time to get home to change, but I want to make it clear that I'm speaking as a resident rather than as the spokesperson for the fire department. I'm here tonight to, uh, register in support of a number of the proposed amendments. Specifically, number eighteen, which is the hearing conservation program. As a, uh, health and safety officer for the fire department, we are already required to have a health and, or a hearing conservation program. But we've never been able to, uh, I guess, crack the nut of, of the, uh, audible tests on a regular basis. This proposal would help that. I'd also recommend it that it's a good thing to have for all city employees. Uh, number fifteen, which is the speed signs. Driving through this community on a daily basis at all hours, that intersection is a pinch point where there's a lot of traffic and a lot of pedestrian conflict. I think it would be very good to have something in there to help people be aware of their speed and make that intersection a little bit safer. Number fourteen, regarding the paid on call pay increase. Under ethical leaders in action, which did a study of the fire department a number of years ago, they addressed paid on call pay. Initially, their phase one was to raise it to ten dollars an hour, which was accomplished. They had a phase two, which was going to move it up to eleven dollars per hour, but that was never enacted by the council. And it's been five years since the pay issue has been addressed. Alder Frada's, uh, system would put us on equal footing with other permanent career staff. In words of, uh, if they get an annual pay increase for cost of living, it would take that into account and we wouldn't continue to fall behind. We are competing for people's time. And if we can make our, uh, positions a little more valuable to them, it, it goes a long way. It sends a good message that their service is valued. Number twelve, which is the lieutenant reclass. This one is really important to the fire department. We've asked for these positions for a number of years and for a variety of reasons, they failed. As the chief has mentioned before, these are key leadership positions within the department and necessary. I understand there was some confusion about them the last time.
Richard, unfortunately I need to, you hit the three minutes unfortunately.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
There's no there.
Thank you for that time. Unfortunately, I have to keep everyone to the same
Okay.
three minutes unfortunately. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, Stephen, you are next.
Evening. My name is, uh, Stephen Wunsch. I'm a resident of the city of Fitchburg, living at fifty seven seventy seven Williamsburg Way. Uh, been a resident there since nineteen ninety four. I'm here tonight to, uh, speak rather globally, uh, about, uh, amendments eight, twelve and fourteen in support of those, all of which of course pertain to the fire department. And I really want to talk to you tonight from the heart. I don't want to regurgitate a lot of the, you know, stuff that you have before you ready and documents. But I want to give you a very honest assessment of where things sit within the city of Fitchburg Fire Department. When I came to that department in two thousand and seven as a paid on call, uh, person, we had sixteen command staff and officer positions. We're now down to ten and with the departure of Chief Roth, we'll be down to nine. You've been asked repeatedly over the years to help us try and build up that department with lieutenants. It's been repeatedly turned down. We are at the point right now, that department is ready to implode. There is no leadership that can fill the positions that are going to become vacant in the future. We have to build it from the bottom up. The time is, time to step up, take a realistic look at what that department and how it operates. Few of you, to my knowledge, have spent any time to come over and actually understand how it operates. We ask over and over again for minute things to just move the needle a little bit to move us forward. Time and time again, the answer is no. I'm telling you, there is a major crisis right on the horizon. The few paid on call lieutenants that we managed to groom and, you know, uh, develop quickly get hired away from other departments. We also have some right now in positions for city of Madison that are likely to be put away. Coverage of supervisors, the OIC, right now is down to three individuals outside of the full time component. We're expected to cover twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. I, as a part time employee, work over twenty five hundred hours a year on top of my full time position. Chief Roth, even more than that. It's pathetic that you expect to run your city's public safety on the backs of people working those types of hours. For me, more than two full time positions. It's time you understand how critical things are right now. It's very easy. We all have tough things. I ask that you do whatever you can to make this happen and next year, seriously consider entertaining a referendum to start bolstering your public safety staffing. Because this is
I have to unfortunately.
All right, you heard it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, are we permitted to ask questions?
No, it's not discussion unfortunately.
I'm available.
Yeah. Uh, Chief Paul Vermaeker, did you want to speak at all?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, a, as you can see, uh, it, it's a, it's an emotional concept. Uh, a lot of our, our firefighters are paid on premises, paid on call and, and are working a lot of hours. Um, it's, it's safe to say that, uh, that I've discussed the, the staffing models with you. And there's no doubt that there's ways that we can address it moving forward in a growing community. So I guess one thing, and I don't want to use up too much time because you've got a lot of stuff from me. And I know that the mayor has been talking about ways that we can maybe look at staffing in the future. But staffing is absolutely something that we have to consider, given the fact that the, the paid on call, paid on premises, uh, recruitment is trending downward and that's nationwide. That's not just in the city of Fitchburg. We will continue to use our paid on call, paid on premises, uh, personnel for as long as we possibly can. And I see that for, uh, a, a long term future, given the fact that we train the fire service. But that said, uh, our numbers are going to have to, uh, look at a different ratio from career to paid on premises. And we can plan that over the long term. So I, I, I won't, uh, say too much more because of the fact that, uh, my, my office is always open. I'm more than happy to have those discussions and it's worth, uh, the conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe online we have Tony Hartman. Tony, are you there?
I'm here. I'm in the corner of Fitchburg. I just drove in.
All right.
Can you see me at all? I tried to turn my light on. I'm going to pull in here to, uh, the corner of town of Madison and soon to be Fitchburg here. So hopefully, uh, can read a few notes. I'm mostly just going to be talking about, uh, about amendment number ten, which is sustainability. And, uh, got a few notes here, but I, I wanted to point out that I think the youngest or one of the youngest Alders is the one who put that forward. And, uh, I think she did it with good reason. Uh, us baby boomers, and I'll include a few folks that are on the council now, uh, have kind of got us into a serious pickle. This is probably the biggest, longest term thing you will act upon this evening and, and for, for years to come if you stay on the council. But, uh, I think you all are aware of the council of parties twenty six, COP twenty six going on in Glasgow right now. Just wanted to point out they have four goals, four takeaways. They want to secure global net zero by mid century and keep the one point five Celsius increase in temperature, worldwide temperatures within reach. Number two, they want to adapt to protect, um, both natural habitats and communities. Number three, mobilize finance. So they're talking about a hundred billion dollars that needs to go into climate finance every year. And finally, work together to deliver all of these. And, uh, I just wanted to point out that there is a whole lot of money that's going to be coming our way in, uh, President Biden's, uh, new, uh, let's call it his, his initiative. But, uh, that won't be available to us if Fitchburg doesn't have a plan. And I know that we got a good start a couple of years ago with some OEI money, but we were part of a much broader picture. We really need to have our own plan. This twenty five thousand dollars is literally a drop in the bucket. But if you think about it in terms of that hundred billion dollar pledge, if every community with thirty thousand people like Fitchburg stepped up, we could make things happen. You all know that I work in that industry. I especially work with nonprofits. Already donated time, I'll continue to do that. I would love to work on any of the projects, uh, that come about after the planning. But you guys all know the adage, if, uh, if you fail to plan, then you plan to fail. So we need to have this money. I could tell you about city of Oshkosh and several other municipalities around the state that I'm working with now. And, uh, it's pretty exciting that there are good things happening. We can do this. But we got to do the heavy lifting as, as senior folks, the folks that are older than Alder Gerhardt. And I think that it has to start with this token amount this evening. And, uh, it's a really important mission. It's bigger than all of us and really will affect our grandkids. So thanks for the, the time tonight.
Thank you, Tony. I believe that's everyone that's here to speak unless I'm missing someone in the audience. All right. But we do have a lot of people who send in emails. We had a number of people who sent in emails, uh, in support of the Seminole Glen Project, essentially saying that they don't want it to be postponed. And they are Anna Kinnig from Fitchburg, Kathy Dudgeon from Fitchburg, Peter Lundberg from Fitchburg, Josh Nacert from Fitchburg, Marcia Griskovich from Fitchburg, Michael Bryant from Fitchburg, Lisa Walsh from Fitchburg, Alice Williams from Fitchburg, Michael Iarcito from Fitchburg, and Nicholas Mueller from Fitchburg. We also had a number of people email that they are in favor of the speed boards added to Seminole Highway. And they are Ann Kinnig from Fitchburg, Kathy Dudgeon from Fitchburg, Peter Lundberg from Fitchburg, Josh Nacert from Fitchburg, Marcia Griskovich from Fitchburg, Michael Bryant from Fitchburg, Michael Iarcito from Fitchburg, and Nicholas Mueller from Fitchburg. Uh, we had a number of people email in support of increasing the city forester position to full time. They are Terrell Brock from Fitchburg, Leah Satchin from Fitchburg, Anne and Ron French from Fitchburg, Brenda Hofer and Dennis Stadler from Fitchburg, Paul Feber from Fitchburg, Wendy Hathaway from Fitchburg, Christopher Sina from Fitchburg, Teresa Payne from Fitchburg, Andrew Sleger from Fitchburg, and Linda Brewer from Fitchburg. Uh, we also had some other people email in in support of the sustainability plan. Uh, that's Anne and Ron French from Fitchburg, Paul Feber from Fitchburg, and Wendy Hathaway from Fitchburg. Uh, we had Katie Trednik from Fitchburg emailed in support of a lot of amendments. They are three, four, nine, ten, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen and nineteen. Uh, Troy Klein from Fitchburg also emailed in support of a number of amendments. They are three, four, nine, ten, thirteen, sixteen and seventeen. Uh, Nancy Arnold from Fitchburg emailed in Nancy Arnold from Pittsburgh emailed in support of all of Julia Radifrada's amendments. She didn't list them, but said all of those, thinks similar to the ones that I just emailed, actually. Christopher Sina from Pittsburgh emailed in in support of Amendment Nineteen. Josh Knacker emailed in, essentially not in support of Amendment Twenty-Three. Wendy Hathaway from Pittsburgh emailed also in in support of Amendments Three and Four. Ari Lo from Pittsburgh emailed in in support of Amendments Nineteen, One, Two, and Six. Elizabeth Fackler from Pittsburgh emailed in in support of Amendments Three, Four, Nine, Ten, Thirteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen. And then Dennis Blankenship from Pittsburgh just emailed in disappointed that the McKee Test Courts have been postponed. And that was all the emails. The emails also went to all council members as well, so everyone had a chance to read those. And that is, I believe, everything I have from public comments. Hopefully, I got all the emails. There's a lot. And so I've seen no other comments from... Did you want to comment on something? Ah, come on up. I was gonna say your name. After you're done, you can fill out one of the forms in the back, but just kind of tell us your name, and you can go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, this is my first time.
That's what I'm-
All right, yeah, thanks for hearing me. So I'm Ari Lo, and I did email, but I've done a little bit more research since. So I definitely want to support Amendments Four and Six, which would both save a little over $150,000. I want to actually register non-support of Amendment Fifteen. This would spend $10,000 on two speedboards at the Seminole Highway intersection, which in my opinion is one of the wealthiest areas in Pittsburgh. I'm actually going to advocate for possibly a new amendment or change of spending for 2023, which is to spend more money on affordable housing projects, such as affordable housing funds, tenant-based rental assistance programs. I think that it's unfortunate that we're considering spending even just $10,000 on the wealthiest part of Pittsburgh, while many other Pittsburgh residents or, you know, non-residents, as it may be, are struggling to find secure housing. We did just see a plan from a developer creating a neighborhood near Maga Park. I assume that was a meeting that ran over from the previous meeting, and it seemed like there were no affordable housing units being offered in that neighborhood that was being developed. The current mayor's budget on Page One, 2020 includes only $42,365 towards affordable housing, and I would like to recommend that instead of Amendment Fifteen, we use that money, at the very least, towards increasing the number.
Thank you.
That's my thought.
Thank you. All right. I think that's all, unless you wanted to speak at all. All right, good. All right, then I can close the public hearing and move forward now to the actual budget itself. And so Randy, do you want to move the first resolution here?
Certainly. Motion to approve Resolution R-189-21, public hearing on council proposed.
First, yeah, do 20621.
I'm sorry, will you jump to the next page? Motion to approve Resolution R-206-21, adopting special rules for 2022 budget adoption.
Second.
Sent by Jay. And Misty, take this one, or would you like to speak to it?
No, go ahead, Misty. You understand the rules.
So these are the rules we talked about at the Committee of the Hall meeting. You'll note that in the packet is the redline version for those couple of changes we talked about during that meeting. So it includes, basically, we'll go through the ordinance process, all of the amendments one by one. There are speaking requirements, so you can only speak twice. Valerie, the city attorney, is here to keep track of that. There's also a time limit on the total amendment, so Valerie, I think, also keeps track of that for us. Once we get through all of them, we will take a short recess. I'll confer with Tracy to make sure all of my numbers are correct. Gabriella agreed to double-check me as well. So then, if the budget meets levy limits at that point, we will move on to the closing statements and be done. However, if it does not, that's where these special procedures will come in. It basically is a chance to reconsider any of the amendments that have already been discussed, but you may want to change your vote on them. I'll be able to do that at that point, and we'll be able to keep doing that process until we have a budget that we can pass, hopefully, tonight. But I will remind you that no amendments are allowed from the floor. That is an ordinance. A purpose of that is to make sure that all of the amendments are vetted in full between staff and citizens or residents and all of you. So don't bring anything new, but anything that has been an amendment submitted for it, we could reconsider possibly.
And one other thing is that traditionally, we always do roll call votes on all the amendments, so we'll do that again, just on all of them. Takes a little bit longer, but for some of them that end up being controversial, it's nice to have that, just wouldn't have to do it twice. Questions on the special rules at all for Misty? All right, Gabriella?
Is this the motion as amended in the packet? As amended in the packet?
Randy, is it a-
The redline version.
The redline version.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else, then we can go to a vote. All in favor of approving the special rules, say aye.
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 And-
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, special rules are approved. All right, number B, or letter B, I should say.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion to approve Resolution R-189-21, adopting the 2022 annual city operating budget.
Second.
All right, now, I believe, Misty, if I remember this correctly, we'll now just go through each amendment. Whoever proposed the amendment will do the motion for it. We'll have a second, and then five minutes starts. So I'll give whoever did propose the amendment the first chance to speak from there, and then take other questions. Reminder, you only get two chances to speak on each amendment, and away we go, I suppose. Misty, further?
I'd like to add one point of clarification. So you can only speak twice, but if you're making a motion, or you're seconding something, or doing an action of business, that does not count towards your two.
Voting on things does not count anything. Yep. All right, question, Gabriella, before-
Someone may keeping track of the time and-
Yep, Valerie's doing that, and also how many times people speak. Yep. All right. Valerie, you have a question?
If I just may ask, would it be helpful for me to share my screen as I keep track of the budget amendment and how many times everybody, each Alder, has spoken? If that's, that would be helpful, I'd be happy to do that, but of course, that will minimize or make smaller the screens of the Alders who are appearing remotely.
Yeah, I think maybe, especially if there's a longer discussion and people aren't sure where they are. I don't know that it needs to be up all the time necessarily, because then I think it limits how many people I can see on the screen, so then if people are raising their hands, that might be an issue if you always have your screen shared.
Very good. It will be available, just let me know if you'd like to see it.
Okay, great. All right, then, why don't we go ahead with number one? Julia, that is yours.
So, so my first one is, so I need to make the motion or no?
If you, yep, if you're going to approve it, unless you're withdrawing it.
Yeah, I am planning to withdraw, but I need to make a statement.
Yeah, go ahead and make your statement, I guess. Go ahead.
Okay. So, so my motion is to delay the hiring of the Assistant Director of Public Works, But I want to share this with the council, why I am withdrawing this amendment, and the effect on the other ones. I met with Bill last week to understand better his own and his team workload and the reason for this new position. As I mentioned in my amendment, I planned to delay the hiring of this position. The main reason that I want to postpone this position is that I disagree with the process. This job position was created without the input of the personal committee nor following a procedure on how to create new job positions. During my meeting with Bill, I also found out how many hours he has been working over the last couple of years, over the contracted, over his own contracted hours. Not only him, but also his entire team. And this is not okay. This is not the only department in the sitting facing this issue. We, and I mean all of us here, should re-provide our staff with a work and life balance agreement. They should not feel overwhelmed over work and burnout. Our staff deserves better. I firmly believe that our substantial city growth has to be equal in pace with the city staffing growth and other resources, but it has not been, and we are facing the consequences right now. I plan to work with the city administrator and the personal committee on a sustainable staffing plan for the city for the next five years. Therefore, I decided to withdraw this amendment from the floor, but I will ask my fellow Alders to approve Amendment Number Six, that is, reduce levy limit adjustment strategy to free up tax levy capacity to approve Amendment Eight, Eleven, and Twelve, that deal with the staffing capacity issue in the fire department, with Amendment Number Fourteen, to increase the base salary for the pay-on-calls firefighters, and Amendment Nineteen is a mandatory hearing conservation. That's all.
All right, so that one's withdrawn. Number Two is also yours. Are you doing a motion for that, or are you withdrawing that one?
Give me a second. One in case. I need approval of the amendment to reduce the Fire Fleet Vehicle Replacement Fund, CIP Two-Two-Nine-Nine.
Second?
Second.
Sent by Jay, and would you like to speak to this, Julia?
Hall, this is not my best amendment, a strategy, but I need to find some of the funds to cover my amendment, so... And I understand all the thing that I am trying to do here, it goes against a lot of the thing that I preach, but I need to find $22,000, and this is, I am taking the money from the vehicle replacement that belongs to the fire department in order to cover for the three, the classification of the three lieutenants.
Anyone else want to speak further? Gabriella?
If it's okay, I have a question for Misty. Is it, since we do have this future TID closure funding that's good for one-time use, if we do pass this, is it possible to backfill the replacement fund with the TID closure to fill that $22,235?
It is possible, but I wouldn't necessarily recommend it.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we can keep this moving then, and go to our roll call vote.
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Have a tie vote.
All right, great. Uh, no.
Motion failed.
All right, on to number three, Gabriella.
I move approval of Amendment Number Three, remove vehicle use reimbursement in certain departments.
Second.
All right, and would you like to speak to it first?
I would. So I think this one's pretty straightforward. There's a series of departments that have vehicle use reimbursements. That's when they use a private vehicle and they get reimbursed for using it, for city uses. Each of these departments that I've selected either have enough city vehicles to cover all of the employees that would use them, or they have not used that amount of reimbursement in several years, even prior to COVID impacts.
All right, and we also want to speak to this one. See, yeah, Julia?
I support it.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, then we can go to the roll call vote, please.
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada? Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Five to three, motion carried.
All right, number four, Gabriella.
I move approval of Amendment Number Four, remove South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, Planning.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and would you like to speak to this one?
I would.
All right.
Yes, so this amendment frees up $75,000 on the tax levy, and my personal preference is if we free up that money to use it for Number Nine, increasing the forester hours, and Number Ten for the sustainability plan, which would total about $69,000, which is comes in under the $75,000 that would be freed up. In my opinion, and I believe in just a good practice opinion, tax levy funding is the best use for core city functions, like staffing, which is what I would propose to use this for instead. I think that, you know, this amount of money, it can almost certainly be used, it can be, this neighborhood plan can be funded next year through the TID closure, and I know that, you know, there's a lot of conversation about what's going to happen with the TID closure, but I actually think this neighborhood planning is the perfect use of that TID closure money, because it was collected for economic development, and it's intended for, this neighborhood planning is intended to expand the city and develop the city, so I think using the TID closure money to fund this plan is perfect use of it. It's also a one-time expense, so I think philosophically, they definitely match. And then I just would like to make the argument that, once again, this is a one-time, one-time expense that's using the tax levy. We have an imminent opportunity to fund that next year, and I do think that funding staffing is much more important in the short term, so we should free up that money, the tax levy, right now to fund staffing requirements. And, so I encourage you to pass this amendment, but in to allay fears that this is some sort of elimination of the plan, which is not what I intend. The intention is to just delay it. I would like to amend the resolution to clarify that this is a delay of the plan and not a removal of the plan.
So are you offering an amendment?
That's a motion, yeah, a motion to amend.
So-
Second.
Sent by Jay. Think you spoke to it, but I don't think you want to speak again to that, right? Good. Any other people want to, so if I'm understanding correctly, it's really just changing the wording of it to say it's delay?
Primarily title, it's to clarify, but I think I miswrote the amendment to make it sound like we're removing it. I don't have an intention to completely remove the plan, but I wanted to remove it from the budget.
Okay. All right, so it's changing the title to really delay instead of remove. Any comments on the amendment? Jim?
I don't know if this is the right time, but you know, we're talking about staffing, and one thing that has come to my mind even before I got on the council is really how staffing has been delayed when we talk about growth and with smart growth. And when you start talking about growth, you have to look at staffing, and I just find it interesting where now it's an issue that everybody's, you know, supposedly, what I'm hearing now is that it's really important. I thought it should be important before, and it should have been important before council members came in with special projects that they wanted, and now all of a sudden, you know, those projects go through now, you know, we're coming back, oh, now let's worry about staffing, it's important. My issue, or my belief in government, is first we got to take care of basic services, and that's public works, which is streets, infrastructure, and personnel, and public safety, and it seems like those have been kind of delayed, that has not been thought about in years. And again, when I came on the council, I was thinking about smart growth, and why haven't these things been considered before? Like the fire department, about stormwater that people want to delay, which is infrastructure? Those are the things that I think are important that the city takes care of first, not the special initiatives that people have, which are good, but we have to keep thinking about our employees, and we got to think about how are we going to make the city actually operate, and that should be number one. So I just wanted to make that statement.
All right, Julia, go ahead.
As a member of SIDA, I want to repeat what I mentioned in Committee of the Hall. I think, I think you want to delay, but I will say that I would prefer an amendment that, that change the funding sources for- that, that change the funding sources for this project. This, the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan is critical for, that we need, for the future growth of the city, and we're talking about in the next ten, twenty years, that we need to develop these future neighborhood plans. Because as I mentioned in the Committee of Hall, when Feige Field is complete, Teravis is complete, and the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood is done, where we are not going to, where we are going to grow as a city if we don't have those neighborhood plan already set up and ready to go? So for the economic, so I agree with you, Jim, about a smart growth. And this is a conversation that I had with Bill about how we can move forward with a smart growth from now on. And, and I think, um, my amendment, my amendment will be to-
Sorry, hold on, I think we're at, we're at time, Valerie?
Yeah, we're running out of time, so I continue.
Five minutes each.
I'll move to extend by five minutes.
So move to extend by five minutes, signed by Jay. All in favor of extending for five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, sorry about that, you can continue.
Okay, thank you, continue, okay. But so I will feel more comfortable if we amend your amendment, your second amendment, instead of delaying is to replace the sourcing funds. Instead of using levy, use, you know, the TID closure funds.
Valerie, Misty, can you, can we do this? We're not really in that process right now. It's something we might be able to do in the future, but can we commit to that right now?
I would encourage you not to. The TID hasn't closed yet. We haven't gone through the spending plan process. So I would, I would caution against that. I, if you're asking me, I guess I would delay it, and then we could bring forward as a budget amendment to do it with whatever funding sources you think is appropriate. At that time, I think that'd just be a better process.
So what I understand, so my understanding is that good strategy, but you don't want to commit yourself to it right now. It's really, once it closes, is what I'm hearing, is a better time to do it? In your estimation? And Jay?
I, I wanted to, since Jim brought up a number of really good points, I wanted to just echo some of that a little bit. There's, there's all this pressure that we have to keep growing, we have to keep building, we have to keep building, 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 growing, growing, growing. But that doesn't end with just building buildings and building roads. Someone's got to plow the streets in the wintertime, because it does snow sometimes in Wisconsin. Somebody's got to respond when there's a fire. I live a half a mile away from a new fire station, and at least, I'm not even hardly home at all. And when I'm home, I hear fire engines pretty much every day driving past where I live. They're busy. The, the police department is busy. And if we're going to grow, then we have to consider staffing in these departments. And, you know, I would expand the definition of basic services beyond what you did, because I would also include the senior center, the library. I mean, we don't have a lot of extraneous services in the city of Pittsburgh. We have eleven or twelve departments, and they are all performing functions that are vital to this municipality existing as it does. So, I, I, you know, I know we can't commit the TID funding at this point, because we don't have it. But I think it's, I think we can free this up out of the general fund and, and deal with it at a future date. I think all of us want to see this neighborhood plan done, but we have some other things that we have to do. And I'll talk more on that later.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I support this amendment. I know there's some uncertainty about what the TID district can be used for. However, I mean, I think the, the plan is going to get done, and it will get, you know, adopted if we don't adopt it this year for this coming budget. And I think, you know, one of the things I respect about the Alder is that she, whenever she, you know, puts in some sort of request for funding, there's always, you know, something to be able, in a smart way, to replace it. So I second what Jay has added. I think it makes sense to, you know, put the priority of thinking about our climate and thinking about our, the sustainability of our city first. And I know that the neighborhood plan will get done, so I, I support this amendment for that reason.
All right, anyone else? See, Gabriella?
If there's no one else, I'll just make a final little push. I mean, I, you know, I can't say what people are going to vote on for the rest of them. And I would very much respect if people wanted to turn down my one-time expense items. I fully respect that, because, you know, I told you at the Committee of the Hall that I do plan to bring them back for the TID closure if they don't pass. But I do think that this money, one hundred percent, we need this money available to be able to talk, even talk about the staffing. Because if we don't pass this, we can't even have the discussion about the staffing. And, and honestly, like, and if you end up not passing the staffing, I guess that's what happens. But ultimately, we have a opportunity to reduce taxes. And then if we just so decide, we can increase staffing and possibly even continue to reduce taxes. So anyway, I, I think it's a really good opportunity. I just strongly encourage you to, to support this amendment. Oh, yeah, the amendment.
Julia, one second. Valerie, how much time do we have left?
We are, once again, at five minutes, so we need another vote to continue the discussion.
All right, so if you want to speak, we have to extend. Move, move by Jay to extend for five minutes.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. All in favor of extending for another five minutes on this topic, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, go ahead, Julia.
So no, I want to clarify that, you know, I really, I really, we really need to, if we need to free up seventy-five thousand dollars for at least to start considering the rest of the amendment that they're coming, because some of them, we need to, we don't pass this one, we can not even continue with some of the amendment that they are coming forward. So I, I want to be sure that I, I am, I can delay this, this, this study, but I will recommend that when TID closure and we go through that exercise, we should include this neighborhood plan in the list of project to fund, okay? That's it.
All right, Randy?
There's, there's been a number of wonderful comments, great comments, by a number of Alders. But what I'm going to narrow in on is the word delay. I, I, I'm somewhat suspicious when I hear the word delay. And further down into the amendments, I see a lot of delay. My concern with delay is it's going to be forgotten. We all have quick, and I can see the shake of the heads, but that's just my thought. As time goes on, it's, it's going to be moved off of the docket altogether. And this is one important planning mechanism that we need to continue with a number of the things that are already described on this, on this amendment listing. So just some thoughts on my part, and take it for whatever it is. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else. So first, this is the amendment to change the title from Remove South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Planning to Delay South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Planning. All right, go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Yes, thumbs up there.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote, four-four.
I'll say yes. All right, so now we're on the main amendment, which is to delay the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Planning. And I don't think there's anything else, probably, but I can check. All right, go ahead for the vote.
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Nay.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote, four-four.
I'm going to say no on this one.
Motion failed.
All right, going on to number five, Gabriella?
Can you just give?
Sure, yep.
I move to withdraw Amendment Number Five, Remove Officer Follow-Up Assignment and Detective Bureau Funding.
You can just withdraw, you don't have to.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Draw number five.
All right, number six, Julia?
I move approval of amendment to reduce the levy limit adjustment strategy earmark for future capital.
Second? Signed by Gabriella? All right, do you want to speak to this one?
Yeah. Misty to help me. Okay, so as I mentioned in the Committee of the Hall, in the 2022 budget, it's assumed that three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars of the levy limit adjustment expected in 2023 will be used for capital purchase in 2023. This amendment reduces that earmark about one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-dollar, which is the police body camera purchase in 2023, the CIP twenty-one forty. This 2023 capital purchase could be funded by the one-time TID closure funding expended in 2022 and 2023. This amendment will provide the funds needed to cover the addition for one career firefighter, another staffing amendment. I will ask Misty to explain this, what is implied, but I want to ask my fellow Alders that we need to approve this to free up tax levy so we can at least move forward and, and we can approve some of this amendment that coming from, you know, to cover some of the, say, um, some of the amendment that they are coming to, to cover some of the staffing issues. So Misty, can you explain what we're trying to do?
Go ahead, Misty.
So this is a levy limit strategy. So it doesn't on its own change how much property taxes we will levy in 2022. What it does is it says, we know that we're going to get an adjustment in '23 for the Town of Madison and the TID closure. We then took out the amount that we needed to balance our CIP, and then whatever amount was left, we could use for operating in the 2022 budget using that strategy. So what this amendment is doing is saying we won't set aside as much for our CIP, which is okay if you will then take that project and fund it through something other than property taxes for it. Personally, I'm okay with this strategy. We are using a one-time funding source for a one-time replacement. But more so than that, we have the replacement fund set up for future years. So we aren't banking on having a one-time windfall in the future. And we are using it really, truly for a one-time thing. And then if you do approve this, again, you're not increasing taxes on its own. It would just be if you backfill that authority to increase taxes with the other amendments that are there.
Other questions or comments at all? Seeing none. Gabriella, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I had a good conversation with Misty about this earlier, because I didn't quite understand it when we were in Committee of the Whole time. So it was really helpful to, to get her take on it. And I think we all would agree that Misty is an incredibly responsible steward of our money. And I think we all have a great amount of respect for her, as, you know, I do, for, for sure. And, you know, this is a type of strategy that, that she thinks, it's, it's a real incredible opportunity. I mean, the TID money is, is a one-time use money. It's a, it's an amazing opportunity to do something unique. This is kind of a, in terms of the tax on the, on the residents, it doesn't make any difference, positive or negative, but it does free up that money for us to potentially look at some of these staffing changes. And so I think that this is, I guess I have, I have two questions to, just to reiterate from Misty. Like, in terms of the use of the tax levy money, do you think it, it's better used on, on staffing versus one-time costs? And then, you know, do you think this is a responsible decision to make?
Go ahead, Misty.
I think the only risk with this strategy would be if the council doesn't then use the TID funding or another one-time funding to fill the body cameras. We know we need to purchase the body cameras. So I think that's really the only risk that we have. But as long as we have a spending plan adopted by the same council, which is what we intend, I think it is responsible if your, your end goal is that you want to be able to approve some of the other amendments for something different. And then as far as the TID closure money, that is a one-time windfall. We definitely should not spend that on ongoing costs like staffing. So I think that's important, that we keep that to the one-time stuff. I think the other part of your question was about property taxes. So I think there's a balance there. You know, a lot of our budget does go to those ongoing personnel in particular things, but there are some one-time pieces included in our levy as well. So kind of a mix.
Anyone, okay, this is your second chance.
I know, it's my, I just want to make one more point that I forgot to make before, was that, which is that the, the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars for the body cameras, we will never see that big chunk of money come through again, because we're going to be doing a replacement fund for that in the CIPs in the future, which is obviously that responsible strategy that Misty has put through. So this is really the one time we're going to see that kind of huge cost. And so I, I think it's an appropriate use to kind of push that to the, to next year. I'm happy to personally sponsor it, guarantee that I will if someone else doesn't want to. So I, I think it's a really, we have a really good opportunity here, and I, I would encourage you to, to pass this so that we can consider some of the other amendments. And I, I respect no's on the other amendments, but I really would like for us to at least have the positive conversation about whether or not we can pass them.
We are past our time.
All right, if anyone wants to speak, we have to extend it. I didn't see any hands earlier, so seeing no one itching to speak on this, why don't we just go to a vote then?
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Nay.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote, four-four.
No.
Motion failed.
All right, number seven, Gabriella?
Sorry, can you just give me one moment?
Yeah.
I move approval of Amendment Number Seven, Eliminate Police Small Equipment Replaced Fund and Distribute Funds to Specific Line Items.
Your second?
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this one?
I would, yes. And I, you know, I'm just going to follow up on what we talked about at the Committee of the Whole. This amendment's really truly about just transparency in the police budget, because that fund, although there was a plan for it, it was not specified in the budget document. And I do think the plan for the, how that money's going to be used over time should be tracked every year in the budget document. And in that spirit, I move to amend this emotion, this amendment to keep that money in the replacement fund and instead direct staff to include documentation about the planned use of the fund, you know, and being specific, with specific items and their planned use for purchase in each annual budget document, as long as this fund exists.
Okay, so if I'm, can I get a second first?
Second.
Signed by Joe. So if I'm understanding, it's actually going to not necessarily change what's in the current budget. It's just adding documentation that we had. It just wasn't included in that document, in the future, having that documentation in there.
One hundred percent, yes. It basically keeps it exactly the same. It's just directs it to have that be part of the budget document going forward.
All right. Any questions or comments on the amendment at all? All right, seeing none on the amendment, which is changing this to essentially include the documentation with what is currently in the budget. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell? Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, so now we have the main motion amended. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that one passes. Number eight, Julia.
So I move approval to add one additional daytime fire, career firefighter.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna pay for that, because the amendment that I brought forward to to cover for this, they were rejected, so. And everyone is talking here about, yeah, staffing issue, staffing, staffing, and what we have done for staffing. You guys voted down the true amendment that they can free that tax levy to cover for this staffing. So I don't have anything to say, you know, you already hear the, what some of the members here of the community spoke about this issue, the under-staffing condition in the fire department, and how this can, this one position can also alleviate some of that. But, you know, so it's $121,000. So I don't know what to say, you know, I I will ask for you to vote for this, but then we need to go back and reconsider one of the amendment that you rejected, so some of you rejected.
All right, Jay, go ahead.
Well, this is one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight. I moved to Pittsburgh in 1985, and I first got elected to the council in 1993. When I was elected to the city council, we had no full-time staff in the fire department. It was all paid-on-call. Including the chief, including the deputy chiefs, including the lieutenants that we had, there was not a single full-time person. Now, at the time, they were able to recruit enough people to fill all those positions. I think at one time, there were something like 70 paid-on-call and volunteer members of our fire department. There's nowhere near that now. I remember when we went from the $8 an hour to the $10 an hour for the paid-on calls. And I remember when Mark Vivian was mayor, he brought forth his budget and proposed hiring six new firefighters, six career firefighters for the department. He then subsequently lost his next election, because the guy who ran against him ran on this big tax increase, which it was a big tax increase, hiring six staff members in one year is a big tax increase. But you have to staff a fire department. We have millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars worth of equipment. We now have millions and millions of dollars in debt to pay for the two fire stations that we just built. And we barely have enough staff to keep the vehicles running. Plus, we have, we have paid-on-call people who I'm sure, I'm sure there are plenty of paid-on-call people who are over there in excess of 20 hours a week, which was never the intention of paid-on-call. So at some point, and I think it will be important, as was brought up earlier by Steve, sometime in maybe February or March, we need to have a committee of the whole meeting, we need to talk about having a referendum to permanently increase the tax levy so that we can, we can hire the staffing that we need. The one problem with the levy limits, as has been discussed many times, is that the formula in and of itself is not sustainable in the long term. And we are now running into not sustainable square in the face. So part of our job up here is to figure this out and make it happen, so. I, we need to, as Julia mentioned earlier, we've had three amendments so far to reduce the property tax levy, and all three of those amendments failed. So I do hope when we get later in this process, we will go back and reconsider those so we can give some relief to the doggone fire department.
Jim, and then Julia, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah.
Before you begin, may I just suggest it's 4 minutes and 30 seconds, perhaps you'd like to take the motion so nobody has to be involved.
I would.
Second.
Move by Jay to extend five minutes, seconded by Gabriella, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
I mean, my position on this, and, you know, partially what you say, Jay, is correct. We started a long time ago where we know we had needs. And again, you know, those needs were not addressed. We have seen projects go through where these needs were not addressed, so I just want to reiterate that. As far as the firefighter position, I would like to see more data. I mean, overtime is an issue. I would like to see how much overtime that's being paid out and what we can do to reduce it. And I'll tell you the difference between this and actually Bill Balky when he added his position, because I think I talked to Bill before you talked to him, Julia. And when I hear a person say that they have worked 600 hours over their scheduled hours, that's 15 weeks, okay, that's something I can hang my hat on, and that's something that I thought was just really ridiculous. Because when I sat down and talked to Bill, I didn't talk to Bill about any of these projects or anything. I talked to Bill about how he is doing. And we talked for a little bit, and when he said that, "I'm trying to get my life back," okay, that was really powerful for me. And I'm not saying we don't need firefighter, I just don't know. I would just like to see more data on the firefighter position.
Julia?
Okay, so we need to have more data for the fire position, also we need to get more data for the assistant director position, because what Bill told us was more like a one-to-one meeting, it wasn't in the metric for supporting the position. And that position was a new position that we didn't even go to, to personal committee to discuss. Okay, so that one is a flaw in the process that we are gonna change, okay? So what I want to mention about, I forgot what I was planning to say now, oh my God. Oh, so while we are paying the consequences of the lack of staffing right now, while we are here, you know why? Because we kept in the past delaying and delaying staffing, because we, whoa, we can't, because we know that we need to increase taxes, we have to increase taxes in order to, if we need to hire more staffing, or we need to add more hours on top of the position. But you know what? It happened with everything that we do in the city. I remember when we start building the fire houses like 10 years ago, we delay, we delay, no, we cannot build it this year, we cannot build it. Eventually, we had to build them, because we don't have any other option. And this is what happened now with the staffing too. We have kept delaying position, because we are afraid to increase our tax, or this is a bad word, but you know, we are, the city's growing, inflation is up, you know. It will be a point where we need to face this, that, yes, we have to, you know, take control and make this decision. This is why we are here, we make this difficult decision. We are not here to, you know, to tell the staff, "Oh, you need to buy, you know, office supply," no. We are here as an Alder to make decision that are gonna affect the 10, 20 years forward, we are looking at the big picture. And we have an issue with the staffing, and we, tonight, we can resolve something. We can do something tonight. At least if we don't give it to the fire department, if we don't give them the one daytime career firefighter, we can give it the reclassification of lieutenant or increase the pay on call, because this is the other thing. We had, we, we say we want to be an equitable community, while we are not paying cola to the pay-on-call firefighter. Okay, so tonight, we need to leave this chamber with something for the fire department, for the forester position, we need to do it, they deserve it.
Gabriella?
I just want to say that the testimony from our firefighters was very powerful. I was very pleased that you came to say that, because I hadn't heard that message. I'm a new Alder, and because of the pandemic, it was a lot of excuses about the pandemic, why I haven't come and actually spent time in the fire stations. I hope to rectify that very soon, because it's something I haven't done yet, and I would like to spend more time. So thank you for coming out to say that. There's clearly a need in the department for help. I just would like to make the strong point that Alder Radafrada paid for this with an offset that literally wouldn't have changed taxes if we had passed it. The council and the mayor declined to pass that, but this was funded. So I am gonna vote yes, because if we have to revisit the whole budget, so be it, but I mean, this should pass, so, and it was paid for, for the public, it was paid for, but the mayor and four of the council members rejected it, so.
We are at 10 minutes.
Motion to extend. Signed by Jay, all favor extending five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, let's start it, enjoy it. Joe, you're up, actually.
Yeah, I don't have a ton to add. I think what Gabriella and Julia said is crystal clear. I just think we need to be consistent with whatever we're saying. So if we're saying essential services are important, then we need to support the fire department's repeated need year after year for better staffing and more staffing. You know, again, there was a clear plan in place. It wouldn't have, the cost of not doing this is gonna be worse than the cost of the amendments that we had, that we rejected earlier. We gotta make an important decision to, you know, invest in what the chief, what the staff has been asking for. The data, you know, is there. It's been presented and it's been argued for years. So I think we need to listen to city staff, something I've heard Alders say over and over again for the past year and a half that I've been on council.
Jay, did you, go ahead and then Jim after that.
Just wanted to make one follow-up to something Gabriella said. And I do, Rich and Steve, I appreciate you coming out tonight and saying what you said. I've known these two guys for a long, long time. And Steve is, can be an excitable kind of guy. I've seen him in a lot of meetings, I've heard him speak in a lot of meetings. I have never heard him speak the way he spoke to us tonight. This is something that's important. If you hear him speaking that way, this is something that's important.
Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I will make this commitment to the fire department right now. I will come and visit the stations in next budget period. I will fight for this position. I'm sorry, I can't really support it now, but I am making a promise to you, everybody here, I will support this position, will fight for this position, and if I have to put the amendment in myself, I will do that.
All right, that's my list. Oh, Randy, go ahead.
I'm gonna agree with Jim, I'll second his motion as well. Not true motion, but his proposal.
Sentiment, all right.
Yeah, excuse me.
All right, anything else? Julia, I think, does Julia have another opportunity to speak, Valerie?
No, unfortunately, she has used both of her turns, as has Alder Allen.
All right, seeing nothing else, then we can go to a vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
She didn't.
Is she there?
Yes, just gotta get the mic off.
Shannon, can you hear me?
Yep, so, nay, sorry.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote, four, four.
No.
Motion failed.
All right, number nine, Gabriella.
I move approval of amendment number nine, increase urban forester naturalist position from .6 FTE to 1.0 FTE.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this one?
I would, yes. So this obviously increases our urban forester from three days per week to five days per week. I, we want data? Here we go, let's talk about data. The urban forester has been a .6, oh, the urban forester has been a .6 full-time employment since 2008. No increase in the number of hours since, for 13 years. In that time period, the budget has literally doubled from 16 million to 33 million. Our population has risen from 25,000 to 31,000. The park system has grown from 527 acres to 729 acres. 527 to 729. We've seen a significant increase in stormwater facilities, new developments, road reconstruction projects, all of which require input from our urban forester, who also serves as our naturalist. She's essentially a department unto herself. She consults with parks, planning, public works, building inspection, and she responds directly to constituent inquiries. And she literally does not have time to manage our urban forest or our natural areas. She's basically just kind of barely getting it together and literally just putting out fires, you know, you know, what do you call it, is a figure of speech, you know, trying to maintain the bare minimum of trees removal to ensure safety. And the lack of the management of our urban forest is detrimental to the city long term. And I also make the point that the forest is actually something that, the urban forest is what people love about living in Pittsburgh. And people talk, when they talk about their neighborhood, they talk about the tree cover, you know, it's something that people love and they appreciate. It's become worse recently with the acceleration of the Emerald Ashmore problem, this constant boom and develops, which we look at all the time at council, and then also future plans to expand the urban service area. I also want to point out that at the first budget hearing, only two people showed up. It was the chair of tree advisory and it was the chair of parks. Both of them advocated for the forester increase in hours before amendments were even submitted. It is long overdue to increase her hours. It's an opportunity to rectify a longstanding staffing deficit that has happened, that has been happening since before any of us were on this council. And I urge you to pass this amendment, and I would urge you to pass it anyway, and we might have an opportunity to revisit some of those offsets when we revisit the amendments later, so I would encourage you to pass this.
Anyone else? Julia, go ahead.
Yes, as you know, I have a similar amendment, but to increase to .8, but, you know, I am okay to approve, to fund to a full-time position, and I wanna give you more metric too, for the people that they like metrics. So as I mentioned in the committee of the whole, so usually the city forested is designed to plant about 100 trees a year among other tasks, but here are the numbers that she already have been working with the city. In 2020, she planted 430 trees. In 2019, 203. In 2018, 136. And in 2017, 361. So she is, this person is doing more than what she's supposed to be doing, and she's only a one-person shop, so.
All right, Randy, go ahead, and then Dave after that.
Has the forester asked to have her hours increased? Did she, is she one of them that spoke earlier, or that you mentioned, Gabriella? No, but she has indicated that to you?
That, yeah, don't speak, or that's when your second turn. I can ask Chad to answer that. Chad, you wanna?
I actually would defer to Scott Endall, I have not been communicated with on that, whether or not she wants to increase her hours. I don't know the answer to that question.
Go ahead, Scott.
In speaking with Anna, she certainly realized that she, in order to do her job effectively, she would need additional hours, and she, she did indicate that she would be willing to work those hours if she did receive them.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Dave, go ahead.
I don't oppose anything that Gabriella said in metrics or Julia, I just feel with one year, I would fully support it next year, but we gotta get past Madison, town of Madison. You know, I would hold up my pedigree involving trees, knowledge of trees and planting and managing forests. The majority of the trees in the city are on private land. And the board of public works, number of years ago, we saw Emerald Ashmore coming, you know, we purchased capital equipment, you know, cherry pickers, you know, so that we could, we could take care of some of these things a little bit better, we saw it coming, so. I would like to wait another year and then I would support this next year.
We are at five minutes.
All right, anyone else wanna speak? Okay, so, all right, move to, by Gabriella. Move to, by Gabriella to extend. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Jay. All in favor of extending five minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, we're extended. Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to say something that is, I don't know, it's funny, I would say. I wouldn't use that word. I hear a lot of you saying delaying, waiting for the, for next year, next year. This is the same thing that I mentioned. We are in this rabbit hole right now because of delaying position. You know, and then I hear most of you say, oh, I am ready to do it next year, next year, next year. You know, please, take the leadership and do something. What are you afraid? You're afraid of your next election? What are you afraid to? Come on, people.
Gabriella, go ahead.
Just last statement is that the, this has been delayed for 13 years. I mean, I guess maybe, maybe the first couple of years, okay. So let's say it's been, it's been delayed 10 years. It's, it's, it's too long. We've delayed, there's probably no other position that's been delayed longer than this one. And I would just also like to say that, you know, in terms of making decisions about the budget, there are things that we can delay. There are things that we can delay that can be paid through these unbelievable opportunities to pay for one-time expenses next year. The TID closure is a very unique opportunity to pay for one-time expenses. The ARPA funding that's coming is a very unique experience. There's a new infrastructure bill that's just been passed federally that gives us all these opportunities. The thing that cannot be paid for with those, with those amounts of money is staffing positions. You cannot pay for staffing positions with one-time pots of money like that. So there are things that we can push to next year. The Stone, North, South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, the police body cameras, literally push them just a few months away. And in the meantime, we can, we can fund staffing. So here's, here's what I'm asking the council to do, like I, we've made the votes before, but we have the opportunity to revisit. So pass this and then consider, we can reconsider those, bringing those things down, moving those one-time costs literally less than six months away, so that we can fund deficits in the staffing. And honestly, here's the thing, here's, we can actually reduce the budget and fund a couple of these staffing positions and still lower taxes. You could increase the urban forester and you could pay for the, for the three lieutenant promotions, and it would, and if you, if you paid for it with those, that South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Planning money, you would still lower taxes. So we could come out of here with two new staffing, or three, three, two, three promotions, one, one staff increase and lower taxes. That's what we should be doing tonight. And if we pass this now, we're going to have the chance to come back and revisit it. And I am happy to pull all of my one-time use amendments, bring it back for the TID closure. You have my word on that. I'm going to talk about them, but I would pull all my one-time amendments so we can come back and we can increase some of these, these staffing positions and lower taxes.
Randy, you go ahead.
Yes, usually I don't get too rattled about other individuals on this council attacking others, but Alder Radifrada, you need to stop attacking them and bullying the rest of us. You accused us of not being leaders. Well, we have our own definition of being a leader. Maybe we look at the residents of Pittsburgh and we take fiscal responsibility at our own discretion as well, just like you have an opinion. So stop attacking other Alders. That's why I ran for council, and I've kept my mouth shut, but tonight, when you came out and attacked again, just because your opinion is all that matters. So stop it.
All right, so let's stick to the amendments on hand. I don't have anyone else on the list right now to speak. And seeing none, we can go ahead to vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
I think that was a yes, right?
Is that a aye?
Yeah, cut off a little bit. I think that was a yes, right, Joe? Yeah.
Alder Strassmann?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote, four or four.
No.
Motion failed.
All right, on to number 10, Gabriella.
I move approval of amendment number 10, add funding for sustainability planning.
Signed by Julia, and you can go ahead and speak to this one.
Thank you. So this adds $25,000 for the sustainability planning. This would be just the beginning of the process. It was outlined and requested by planning department, but was not included in the budget. Our sustainability specialist, Phil Groupie, included a really great memo that explained the need for this. I, in my, in my mind, the sustainability plan is essential as Pittsburgh continues to grow and change. It's going to allow the planning team to define the scope of the plan. And then the things that sustainability planning could do would be to enable us to be more resilient to climate change impacts and costs. This is really the key part, in my mind. You know, Tony Hartman mentioned, you know, was talking about me, like, I'm 33 years old. I would love to live in the city for at least 60 more years. And climate change is coming, and there's going to be a lot of impacts for it, and we need to prepare now for what that looks like, because when you look at the projections, it's serious. And we, we can no longer wait and push this back. On top of that, you know, sustainability planning allows us to reap cost savings with fuel efficiencies and sustainability initiatives. You know, it's, and it also, it allows us to, to really go into expansion of the city in a responsible way. So I'm going to give you two examples. We expanded into Terra Vesa. The original plan was for that to be gravity wells, gravity sewers. And when we actually did, when we actually expanded, we could not use gravity sewers, so we had to put in a lift station. It's extraordinarily expensive capital expense, that's an ongoing expense, huge energy suck, which has negative consequences in terms of climate change. That was something that a sustainability plan in place, I'm not sure that that would have happened. Or if it would have happened, we would have had the full information before we moved forward. We would have been able to make a choice about whether or not we wanted to expand if it required a lift station. Second example, Stoner Prairie Neighborhood, the north, yeah, North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, had the sub-zero kettle on Lacy and Seminole as the stormwater management site, assuming that it would be empty. It is not empty. It has never been empty in the last 10 years. And if, because that was part of the plan, that means that we're going to have to find a way to either increase infiltration and probably also pump it. So we're looking at a million-plus-dollar pumping station that's continuing ongoing cost, energy suck, and, and just honestly, a risk to all the property owners in that area and to the infrastructure that we built. If we had a sustainability plan where we were looking at this comprehensively, would that have happened? I'm not sure that it would have. I hope maybe it wouldn't have. We're talking about expanding, talking about South Stoner Prairie. How can we even create that plan if we're not thinking about climate change and resiliency? And how we can grow this city in a responsible way and really be able to make those decisions about whether or not we can even grow? Because we, we're basically allowing us to incur costs that we didn't even foresee, because it's not part of how we think about expansion of the city. We passed a Clean Air Energy Resolution that literally said that we were going to develop something like this. And, you know, you know, we can't afford to not do this. It's, you know, I, you know, you know me, I love trees. I love the environment. I love those things too, but it's not just about that. It's about being able to afford this city as it grows and changes. And I don't think any of us have fully internalized the struggles that are coming, and we need to prepare. And this is $25,000. This is a friggin' drop in the bucket, but it's the beginning of, of making the city resilient to the future. And I would love to be able to live in this city for a long time. And, yeah, that's it.
Randy, go ahead, and then Joe after that.
Of all of the amendments regarding trees and vegetation, Alder Gerhart, this is one that I actually favor. And the reason for that, it's a plan. I don't know how many times I've said here on other controversial amendments and said we need a plan. This one speaks to it. We need, it's a plan. It's a study. It's telling us how to move forward. And if I can vote in favor of this, I will.
I've got Joe and then Jim after that. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so just from a health perspective, I think this is best compared to preventative medicine, right? You know, we're making a very small investment in something that will essentially give guidance to all of the growth that we do in the future versus the very costly things that we've had to invest in as intervention. So I really strongly urge my council members to approve this as a measure that will have ripple effects and pay dividends, because, you know, all of the things that every Alder in their district has had to deal with, with regards to flooding, and more broadly, with the effects that we have globally of climate change, Pittsburgh needs to be a leader in this. And we, we need to have this basic plan in place. It's, it's, you know, it's done in other municipalities throughout this county. It's, it should be a bare minimum standard that we have this sustainability plan in place. So I fully support it, especially for the, you know, minimal investment that it will cost.
We are at five minutes. Past five minutes.
I move to extend by five.
Second.
By Gabriella, second. By Jay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, I've got Jim, then Julia, then Dave.
Yeah, this is something I can really get behind, because my last year on the department, after 28, nearly 28 years, August of 2018 will be a time I will never forget. And for those who don't know, that's when we had one hell of a rainfall. And basically, what it did to the city of Madison was amazing. Myself and Ed Ruckregel, we were co-managers for the Emergency Operations Center. And on that night, when it started to rain, we were thinking about what we needed to do. And first, there was some type of traffic slow up on the Belt Line. And when I actually made it to the front of all those cars, I just could not believe the river that was going across the Belt Line, actually near Greenwood, Greenwood Boulevard. And I was just amazed. I just stood there, like, you know, what do we do? As I decided to meet with Ed Ruckregel, who's the other emergency manager, and Rob Phillips, who was the city engineer, we decided to meet at the West District Station on McKenna Boulevard. So as I made my way, thinking I could go along the Belt Line, get off at Gammon, and come down, that's when I saw a car at McKenna and Hammersley, where the water was nearly up to the roof, and I had to go around the other way to come off of Raymond. So we're deciding, like, what do we do now? And we thought that the water would actually go down, you know, during that rainstorm, but all of a sudden, the cell basically stayed on top of us. And that's when we decided to pull the trigger and basically open up the Emergency Operations Center. During that time, the water was getting so high that I was actually calling in for dump trucks from the city, just in case we had an emergency, because no one can get through water. If you understand, you know, that west side, we could not get through. And so that started a couple of weeks, a few weeks of basically just dealing with the aftermath of that. The next morning, towing 200 cars from the west side. The residents putting sandbags in front of their homes, apartment buildings, worrying about the catastrophic failure of the tinny locks. And I don't know if anybody went down there, but the water was nearly to the top. So climate change is something that is happening now. We're seeing the effects of that, and this, I think, is very important, and it's something I can really get behind.
All right, I have Julia, and then Dave after that. Go ahead, Julia.
So I want to make a comment about this amendment, and my comment is, I will support this amendment about sustainability plan, because I believe that sustainable cities and communities support positive economic, social, and environmental links among urban, semi-urban, and rural areas. Increase the adoption of integrated city policy to mitigate climate change, climate change, and promote planned store inclusion. Support resilient buildings, ensure an access to safe housing and services, provide access to sustainable transportation, enhance inclusive and sustainable urbanization, and reduce deaths and losses to disaster, and reduce per capita city environmental impact, and provide access to green public space. So I fully support this. It's something that I mentioned in the committee of the whole. Our threat for the next 10 years is going to be how to deal with climate change and affecting our, our greenest places, our rural areas. So it's important that we have a plan in place.
All right, Dave, go ahead.
I am, I am someone that lives sustainably, you know, I live close to work, I ride my bike to work, mile from shopping. I live a sustainable life, and it's something that all of us have a responsibility for. I certainly admire Gabriella's passion for this. I certainly appreciate that. I think it's a personal, a personal thing, and I'm going to go on a limb here and say, no matter what we do in the city of Pittsburgh, it's not going to affect, affect the climate. We're not going to make it, make it better or worse. I'm for sustainability, but my fear is, we'll have this plan, and then things will be put in there, and then down the road, all right, we have to do it, because it's in the plan, kind of like the buffered bike lanes that you beat me over the head and spent a lot of money on. So that's why I, you know, I believe everyone, it's their responsibility to live their life sustainably and, and, and move to that direction, but I'm, I'm not in far, in favor of the city spending the money for this at this time.
I regret to inform you, we're once again at five minutes.
Move to extend.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. All in favor extending five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right, Joe, you're up.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like this amendment's going to pass, which is great. I just have to address what was just said. You know, we're a part of a collective, so this is a city council. We form a local government, so just by nature, we're making decisions on behalf of, of the collective, and individual decisions aren't going to stop what's happening in our planet. It has to be done through policy. I could recycle, I could bike to work, but at the end of the day, we have to think, we have to have measures on how our work is guided and how development moves forward in order to preserve our resources and in order to prevent flooding, prevent climate change. Pittsburgh is one part of the state, you know, the county, our nation's policy, and global policy, and we are a part in making that happen. It's not going to happen through individual behaviors only. It's, it's got to happen through policy, and that's why we're on the council, to make policy about how our city is run in a way that's going to serve our residents, and ultimately serve, you know, people beyond the city of Pittsburgh as well. So again, reiterate my support for Alder Gerhart's amendment. It's crucial.
Jay, go ahead.
I think one thing to remember is that this, this plan is not about changing the climate. We obviously aren't going to be able to do that. This plan is about coming up with a method of reacting to the inevitable climate change better than we are able to do right now without a plan. And I, I've, I've been involved in Pittsburgh government for a while, and I, and what I've seen is that Pittsburgh doesn't just do stuff because it's in a plan. When we come up with a plan, mostly what happens is we spend a bunch of money developing a plan, and then we stick it on a shelf somewhere, collects dust for a few years until someone decides, oh, we need to do another plan again. Rich, I, it's been at least three fire department staffing studies that I know of, and I'm sure there have been more. I remember one that had us, that had Fitch, and I just happen to remember the numbers because it was such a, it was a synchronicity of numbers, that we were going to have 20 full-time career staff in the fire department by 2020. We are currently at 14, which is two-thirds of that. Now, I mean, that's, that's a plan that's probably 15 years old, and I don't even know if there are copies of it that exist anymore. But I remember, I remember having a whole bunch of people stuffed in that meeting room down at the end of the hallway. There were probably 30 people in there. down at the end of the hallway, there were probably thirty people in there. And we were all talking about fire department staffing for the longest time, and then this plan came. So we don't, we don't even follow our own plans. And as witnessed tonight, you know, there doesn't seem to be any amount of study that's enough sometimes to make important changes happen. So this is a start, and yes, it's going to cost more money in the future. But this is a start to hopefully have a plan that we'll maybe follow.
Gabriella.
Just a parting thought, I mean, I, I agree that, you know, we can't solve climate change in the city of Pittsburgh, that'd be great if we could, but we, we definitely can't. But I, I see, you know, preparing for climate change, it's really a cost-saving measure because gas prices are gonna rise, energy prices are gonna rise. If we invest in renewable energies, we can save our city money and be able to continue providing service. And then also, like, I actually would prefer to call it like a climate resiliency plan if it were my decision, because I think it's really about how do we adapt so that we, our city can move forward, we can keep the quality of living, make this place a beautiful and a wonderful place to live, and be able to afford to have a city that's growing. And I, I do think that there are a lot of things that maybe we're not even, we're not even capable of thinking of at this point that could be potentials. And there's a lot of good ideas out there. And I just, the last thing I wanna say is, if the council is willing to vote pass this, we will have to revisit some amendments. But I, I would, I would be happy to make a proposal about which ones we could bring back. And I legitimately think that if we visit a couple of those amendments for reductions, we could walk away with some of these staffing changes and a sustainability plan and lower taxes. So, but the first step is that we had to pass something. So I, I ask you to, I appreciate all of your kind words and your support for this. I'm happy to hear that there's support in the city for this and amongst Alexa officials. But we, we do have to pass it, otherwise we cannot revisit those reduction amendments which are required in order to actually make this happen.
We have once again reached five minutes.
All right, I don't see any other hands, so I think we might be able to just vote. All right, go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Radifrada.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
Aye.
Alder Udell.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Seven to one, motion carried.
All right, going on to number eleven, Julia.
Okay, so I move approval of amendment to increase the Urban Forester Naturalist position from point six to point eight, so, okay.
Oh, any sign?
Second.
Signed by Jay, all right, go ahead, Julia.
So, okay, so we discussed this with Gabriella amendments. Her amendment was to full-time position, this one is to bring it to point eight. So maybe some of you feel more comfortable to increase this position that we really need to increase. And maybe the levy increase is only twenty-three thousand dollars per year instead of the forty-five, forty-five thousand, something like that. So I think we already gave us all the metric and rationale about why it's so important to, to increase the hour for this position. So I will appreciate if you reconsider, maybe you feel more comfortable to approve instead of a full-time position, increase a couple of hours a week.
All right, anyone else wanna speak to this? There was a lot of discussion before, go ahead, Gabriella.
I think any additional time for an urban forester would be helpful. Point six to point eight would, would make a difference. And it sounds like there's potentially support for increasing those hours even further in future years. So when we do come back to revisit this, I would be happy to pull my amendment and have this be considered instead, so that we're talking about a smaller increase to the budget. But still, what I consider to be a significant change in terms of the forester's ability to do her job well in the city.
Anyone else? Joe, are you raising a hand there? Go ahead.
Yeah. So one of the things I, my, my day job, I work for UW Extension, and this is sort of the battle in a lot of the positions of colleagues that I work with, sort of having to fight for going from part-time to full-time, back to part-time, you know, based on the decisions that are made at, you know, the funding level of the counties that fund, that joint fund those positions. So I, I've seen this play out in other places. I've seen people that really do solid work be undervalued and sort of have to continue to kinda go back to decision-makers to fight for their positions and fight for the work that they do. So while I haven't had a lot of, you know, interaction with the forester, just from what I'm hearing, you know, about the work that she does, the coalitions that she builds, the, all of the different aspects of her job, I'm convinced that there needs to be some sort of, you know, ability for her to have the capacity to do the work that she does. So, you know, I, I support the previous amendment. If that's not possible, I support this amendment.
All right, anyone else? Gabriella, go ahead.
I will just say one, one thing in terms of strategy, so I'm, I'm tracking the tax levy with the passage of the sustainability plan. And that one going down, we're, we're over levy limit right now. So we're gonna have to revisit, okay? Bottom line, we're gonna have to revisit. But moving forward, I have a proposal for the council to consider. Let's look at these, because the amendments are gonna go down in cost as we go forward, right? So let's try to vote on the things that we think we can keep. And then when we revisit the amendments, we can just revisit the offsets and find offsets to, to fund those things. I mean, obviously, we can keep the other ones on the table, we can. But once we off, once we pass the offset, we would, might not even need to revisit them. So anyway, it sounds like there's at least somewhat, some interest in the urban forester. We're gonna have to revisit these amendments anyway, and like I said, I think a point six to point eight is significant. So I'd urge you to pass this so that we can include this with our array of amendments when we reconsider.
All right, don't see anyone else, so we can go ahead to vote.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Radifrada.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
Nay.
Alder Udell.
No.
Alder Wheeler.
No.
Tie vote.
No.
Motion fail.
Number twelve, Julia.
Okay, so I move approval of the amendment to add the reclassification of the three full-time firefighters to lieutenants.
Second.
Signed by Jay, go ahead and speak to this one.
Yeah, I think that we already, this, this amendment is allow the fire department to proceed with the reclassification of the three full-time firefighters to lieutenants. These promotion were approved in two thousand seventeen, but no budgeted in recent years. The, this, this proposal does, does not change the total number of staff position in the fire department, it's only to reclass some leadership position. This amendment is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars annually. And then what I want to mention is during two thousand nineteen budget, the fire department adjusted its budget to cover for this additional expense, but the council at that time denied this promotion. So, so I think we have heard a lot tonight about some of the experience coming from our own fire department personnel. We received a couple of email, I don't know if you have the opportunity to read those email. They, one of the email with a lot of information about what is happening with the fire department staffing in Wisconsin. So, and even now with the town of Madison annexation, I think this one is gonna give a better structure organizational to the fire department in the leadership position. So I think that it's something that they, this, this position were already approved in two thousand seventeen. It's time that we move forward and we give the fire department this, this, reclass this leadership position, so I will ask for your support.
All right, other comments? Gabriella.
I think one of the, I can't remember, I'm sorry, which one of you said it, but just leadership is important, and grooming people for leadership and for taking on the mantle of, of, of the, you know, carrying that forward is important. And my guess is that there are people that are already doing this work, they're not being paid for it. I don't think that we should be asking people to do work that they're not paid for. I think people should be acknowledged for the work that they do. And so I think this, more than the earlier one, is, is almost more important because it's like, we're acknowledging people for their work, and we're making sure that they're prepared for, for additional leadership in the future, and retaining them, keeping them in Pittsburgh. We want the people to stay here, we don't want them to move away. And again, I think this is a relatively minimal cost for, in, in terms of what the impact is. And again, I mean, we need, we need those, those staffing positions to be in the tax levy versus the one-time cost, so I support this.
All right, I don't see anyone else, Julia, go ahead.
So I want to add to the council and to the new members that this is the third time that I bring it forward, this amendment, so I hope this is the, the last one.
All right, I don't see anyone else, so we can go ahead to vote.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Radifrada.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Alder Wheeler.
No.
Tie vote.
No.
Motion fail.
All right, number thirteen, Gabriella. Yep.
I move approval of resolution, gosh, amendment thirteen, add funding for tree plantings.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and go ahead, Gabriella, if you're ready.
Um, yes, so like I said, this is a, you know, this is a one-time funding. You better believe that I'm gonna bring this forward for the TID closure next year, so stay tuned for that. But in the meantime, I just want you to, I think there needs to be an acknowledgement that we do not have enough money to plant trees in the city. A few bits of info that were brought up last year that I didn't have answers for. Trees that we plant are typically one and three-quarter to two inches in caliper, which I believe is the radius, I'm not sure, actually, it's the diameter, okay, good. I was not sure what that meant, so thank you, Chad. So it, it averages about three hundred a tree, depending on the, the species. And so if you added a fifteen thousand to the budgets, that would be approximately fifty trees in addition. There are more expensive trees that you can get, that there's sometimes like six hundred plus, but then it costs more to install them, so you might have a thousand dollars to, all the equipment to move them around. So you can do more mature trees, it's very expensive. It's really only recommended for parks because they don't always take. So anyway, that, we don't typically do that because of the budget, so. And then in terms of, you know, what she's doing, she like, Anna puts through work orders to remove ash trees that are becoming hazardous, mostly the ones that are becoming hazardous that are dying. And she, she's already had sixty-five ready to go for next year. And then they're honestly probably gonna have at least a hundred and twenty that are up for removal. And our spring planting has, has us adding a hundred and twenty-five trees. You're talking about a net neutral impact on trees overall. And, you know, we need to add trees to our canopy in order to achieve our goals. It's not, we can't just keep with this, this pace of a net neutral or a net negative amount of trees that are going up in, in the city-owned properties. So anyway, I think this is incredibly important. I, so I have to vote yes because I, I think it's, I think it's urgently needed. But it will come back next year when the TID closes.
Jay, go ahead.
I want to ask a number of questions, so hopefully they won't all count as a speaking time.
Just ask them all, and then we'll go through there.
What is the original budget amount, what's the original budget amount for account one hundred dash fifty-five, twenty dash two ninety?
Can you just, I think you actually have to ask all the questions right away, otherwise they're considered separate terms.
Uh, the next question is, is this considered, is this going to be a one-time expenditure? Is this expected to increase this line item forever and ever amen? And then the third question that I have right now would be, right now, in our, in current fund balance, what is fund balance right now beyond the twenty-five percent that is our top limit that we have placed on it?
I can answer the second one, which is, this would be considered a one-time expense, because this is additional above and beyond what is in the budget. Misty, I don't know how much that you can answer.
Almost there.
She's looking it up.
So included in the two thousand twenty-two mayor's proposed budget in that two ninety account was a lot more than just trees. So looking at just the tree piece of it, there was thirty-five thousand, five hundred, which includes five thousand dollars for tree replacement due to EAB. So there's that funding available. And as far as the fund balance amount, we are in excess of the twenty-five amount, twenty-five percent amount of the policy. And we actually shoot for thirty percent because that's what Moody's AAA is. But we are planning to spend some of that already, so the town of Madison is planning to use some of that. And then the omnibus amendment with the expenditure restraint strategy would use some of that as well.
I'm actually gonna take one turn to speak and just let you know that this, along with a few other things tonight, are things actually all put in the, my proposed expenditure for the TID projects. You won't have to bring an amendment, well, unless you wanna change the dollar amount, I guess, but. Oh, okay, I guess I won't then. But no, so, I mean, this, along with a number of other things, are things that I think do have a lot of value and are things that, even if they don't happen tonight, are things that I think the TID is a great option to use for stuff, stuff like, something, something like this, so. Other people?
If I may, before we have more discussion, we're at four minutes and forty-five seconds.
I move to extend for five minutes because I'd like to say something else.
All right, signed by Jay, all in favor of extending, say aye.
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 And oppose name? All right, we're extended for five minutes, and go ahead.
All right, I'd like to propose an amendment since I'm one hundred percent certain that fifteen thousand dollars won't pass, so I'd like to amend this to, to be five thousand dollars and see what the council would like to do with that amount.
Signed by Julia, to amend this to five thousand dollars instead. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. Then first, we would vote on the amendment to change it to five thousand dollars.
Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Radifrada.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
Nay.
Has a name?
Nay. Alder Udell.
No.
Alder Wheeler.
No.
Tie.
No.
Amendment failed.
All right, and now we're on this main motion, which is still the fifteen thousand.
Alder.
Go ahead, yeah.
Oh, Alder Allen.
Do I get to be first for every single one of these?
Yeah, it's alphabetical.
I, I, I'm going to vote no on this.
Alder Radifrada.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Yes.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
No.
Alder Udell.
No.
Alder Wheeler.
No.
Five-three, motion fail.
All right, onto number fourteen, Julia.
So I move approval to the increase of the amendment to increase the pay on promise on pay on call firefighter starting wage.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I think we discussed this in the committee of the whole, but this amendment is to increase the starting pay of the pay on, of pay on call firefighter from eight point five dollar an hour to eight point sixty-seven, that is equivalent to a two percent increase. This increase to the tax base, to the base rate, sorry, for educational and certification will remain the same. So as I mentioned in my rationale, this, this pay structure was last updated in two thousand nineteen. And I think the two percent call increase included in the two thousand twenty budget for non-represented staff is proposed for the starting wage, wages. staff is proposed for the starting wage, wages for the, um, pay-on-call employees. So I think if we do that, if we apply this, um, we can also bring that, um, you know, bring this equitable, um, um, you know, um, uh, how gonna say it? We are making that everyone is participating or receiving the same percentage of call increase, no matter if you are on pay-on-call firefighter or, uh, uh, full-time employee. So what I want to mention is that if we compare our, our, uh, pay-on-call firefighter, uh, salary, uh, base, you know, is, uh, is relatively low compared to other municipalities. So, so what we're trying to do is increase that two percent per year, so to maintain that, um, the call adjustment.
All right, Alder, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I do believe that pay equity is very important, especially for, for morale, so I think this is a, um, good amendment.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, then I guess we can go right to vote.
Aye.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Don't fall off your chair, aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye, of course.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, I wanna vote aye too.
Unanimous.
All right, uh, onto number fifteen, Randy.
Uh, motion to approve amendment number fifteen, add two speed feedback boards at Seminole Highway and Schuman Drive.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this?
Uh, yes, uh, this amendment proposes the placement of two speed feedback boards for the Seminole Highway pedestrian crossing at Schuman Drive. Uh, the cost of each sign is four thousand dollars, and depending upon what, where it is located and who is installing it, there may be additional costs for poles, bases, et cetera, for an additional thousand dollars per sign, but it's total, total of five thousand dollars per sign, ten thousand dollars in total. And the reason why, this location is adjacent to the Seminole Pool Tennis Club, which, uh, has a great deal of children and family activity during the summer months. Traffic is expected to increase in volume, given the development. Uh, this intersection is already, uh, the site of the second-most crashes within Pittsburgh, according to the 2021 bike and pedestrian crossing data collection and prioritization summary data. Uh, two speed feedback boards are the most feasible and cost-effective way to protect the safety of the public. And, um, just to remind you, last time around, this was, uh, uh, criticized for not having data, and I have provided that data, which was provided by, uh, the Public Works Transportation Engineering, engineer, I should say, and it's also the same data that Alder Gerhart has passed around, so please consider voting for this, uh, this amendment.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a, uh, I had a service call on Schuman Drive very close to this intersection on Saturday. There was nothing going on at the Seminole Pool on Saturday because it was cold outside. Um, and even then, when I left Schuman Drive to go onto Seminole Highway at three o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, it was difficult to get a gap to turn because I, I don't know that, um, I don't know that these, uh, speed feedback signs do much to actually, to actually slow people down in real life, but something needs to be done at that intersection. And I know that during big events at the pool, there are people who park across the street because there's big parking lots over there, and, um, then they have to cross, and so I can just imagine how, uh, how dangerous that situation gets, so, uh, I, this is, I, I want to do this, but, um, I hope that, uh, in next year's budget, we'll have some other more comprehensive traffic calming for that area.
Jim, go ahead.
Because my question is for Bill. Will these signs record, uh, record the traffic data and be able to be used by traffic engineering?
Uh, yes, they, they will, uh, that is one of the options that we can program, or, it's an add-on option that we can, for those signs, yeah.
Can I follow up? Well, I like these signs because of that feature. Um, speed is one of those things that people complain about a lot, um, if I'm not mistaken. Um, if these signs do record speed, sometimes people believe that, um, speeding is occurring excessively when it's actually not. Um, I did have a conversation with, um, um, traffic engineering, I forget his name now.
Andrew?
Andrew, old age. Um, and these signs can be effective in slowing people down when, uh, they see that flashing light. And where I'm going with this, I believe in this then, uh, will allow cops not to be sitting there shooting laser or radar trying to catch speeders, um, when the, um, um, when the complaints come in. So I do think actually they would be cost-effective and it will free up time for police officers.
Anyone else? Seeing, oh, Gabriela, go ahead.
Um, sorry.
You wanna go to Julia first?
Yeah.
Julia?
Um, you know, I don't have any problem to approve this, but then, um, we are over, uh, levy, so we need to go back and to, to do some reconsideration of some of the proposals that we, um, we put together, Gabriela and I, to free up some tax levy. That one is a trade-off.
Gabriela?
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I have no problem with this. I would say just generally, like, like I've said, I think it's a good one-time use expense that you could pay for the TID. However, um, I'm gonna pass this because I think safety is important. Obviously, lots of kids crossing the street and I don't, it's just not worth the risk of someone getting hurt. But I would ask my fellow Alders that, we're gonna have to reconsider anyway, and I won't touch this, but there are a couple I'm gonna bring back that I would ask you to reconsider upon, when we come back to it.
All right.
Yeah, I've passed five minutes.
All right, I don't see any other hands, so I think we're okay to go to a vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, uh, number sixteen, Gabriela.
Uh, I suppose I, oof, like I said before, I, I think this is a great idea to add native plantings in Pittsburgh parks. I think this can wait, and therefore I'm going to withdraw amendment number sixteen.
All right, then, uh, seventeen is also yours.
I move approval of amendment number seventeen, add funding to pilot sustainable vegetation in street medians.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this one?
Yeah, I mean, we had a little extensive conversation at committee of the hall, so I won't repeat it, but I, I think this is, just makes sense, and I think it's important. We're redeveloping Blassey Road and Sine Road next year, so there's a lot of street medians that are gonna be going in. I think this, more than any of my other one-times, is more urgent because if we can pilot it early in the year, potentially we can, we can, you know, use that as a model to start incorporating it into the roads that we're developing next year. So I, I respect if people wanna vote no, but I, I think that this, of any of the one-time expenses, um, has some sort of time urgency because I, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't wanna continue seeing turf grasping put into the new roads.
Anyone else?
Um, yes.
Julia, go ahead.
So we have, uh, in the Parks Commission, um, we are discussing, um, the update of the, uh, Parks Plan, um, and we have a great discussion last, um, last week, um, about how to implement, kind of like what, what Rella is mentioning in this, in her amendment, is, uh, how to, um, what are the ways that we can reduce how much, um, labor and cost on, on, on mowing, mowing the medians, and we discuss about, um, native plants, so I will support this.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we can go ahead to vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie vote?
No.
Motion failed.
All right, uh, number eighteen, Julia.
Yeah, okay, so this one is, um, I move, um, oh my god, um, oh my god, approve, what is? I move approval of amendment number eighteen to add hearing conservation program.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and go ahead and speak to this if you'd like.
So I think this is an amendment that we're discussing, uh, we also received an email from Sarah Olson, she is, um, also here, so she can add some comment. Uh, this is an amendment to add funding to establish a hearing conservation program for employees that are exposed to vehicle, equipment, tools in the Department of Public Works, Utility, Parks, Street, Police, and Fire. So this one is kind of like a mandatory, um, program that the city need to implement.
All right, any other comments or questions? Siri, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to stress that it, we did find out it is a legal requirement, so I reached out to CivMec to get some clarification, and, um, although Pittsburgh is not regulated by OSHA, we are, um, regulated by DSPS, which is Department of Safety and Professional Services, and they do require that municipalities follow OSHA regulations regarding the hearing conservation, so I just wanted to clarify that it is a legal requirement that we have a hearing conservation program.
Dave, go ahead.
Sarah, um, that's kind of a broad term, you know, hearing conservation, you know, I, I work around noisy environments, you know, we, we have hearing protection, you know, that will require different, different types, depending on the situation. You know, does this, does this mandate, you know, the audiology testing and, and all that, you know, I, I, I'd like it a little more specific, uh, you know, make sure we're not applying something that isn't, isn't required, you know, I, I think, I think all our departments, we, we know how to take care of our ears. I work in a business where it, it's important and we, we don't have that audiology testing. I, I just wanna make sure that is a requirement before I, before I vote.
Absolutely, absolutely, so we had CivMec come on-site and actually went and measured the different, um, decibels that employees were being exposed to and did identify that Public Works, Police, and Fire were being exposed to, um, it basically the, it's an eight-hour time-weighted average sound level of eighty-five decibels, measured on the A scale, so they, we did have CivMec come out and actually measure that, and this would just be done on an annual basis and then upon hire and then when they leave. Um, we do provide hearing protection, absolutely, um, but CivMec, you know, did come out and measure that, the sound of the equipment and the trucks and everything to make sure that this is actually needed, um, so we did get that confirmation from CivMec.
All right, anyone else wanna speak to this one? Seeing no one, then we can go ahead to a vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, onto number nineteen, Julia.
I move approval to the amendment to add a water fountain in McKee Park in the inclusive playground.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and you can speak to this if you'd like.
Yes, so this one is to, uh, use, um, um, Park Fee and Louie and Lou of Land, dedication from the quarry, quarry-rich retirement community to fund for this amendment. We are not using, uh, levy for this, so, um, this one is, this is a special park that they need a special accommodation, um, we need to have a water fountain that is close to the area, so I will appreciate all of you if you can support this one.
Randy, go ahead.
Was this not in the, uh, the original proposal?
Oh, hold on, you can't, she can't answer because that's a fucking time, you can ask Misty though, Misty, you know, the answer?
I have no idea, Scott Endel is here though, so.
Oh, Scott, oh, sorry, Scott, if you're still with us, if you know the answer, that'd be great.
Yeah, it was not included in the original plan.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Uh, Dave, go ahead.
Um, I don't know, it sounds like a Grinch, but we have two water fountains there, and won't most of the, um, children using this, won't there be someone probably with them? Um, you know, I don't wanna be a Grinch, but, you know, is it, we have two close, you know, we have a lot of parks that probably could use fountains, I, I, I'm just asking the question.
So you wanna know from Scott how many water fountains are in McKee Park right now?
No, I know there's two.
I think there might be more than that. Scott, do you know how many water fountains are in McKee Park?
There, there's actually, I think there's one by the tennis court, so there would be three, there's one by the inclusive playground, or, excuse me, the splash pad, uh, which is relatively close, but certainly with the inclusive playground, uh, we're really designing the playground for, uh, for those special need, uh, customers that, you know, in theory, probably it would be a bit of a, uh, you know, a bit of an effort to get over to the splash pad, so I think this is a, you know, an, an additional amenity, if you would, it wasn't included in the basic, uh, plan, which we really, with the budget, we wanted to be as, as, uh, you know, as base as we could, and it wasn't included in it, but certainly, I think it is a, it is a viable addition, considering the, the type of amenity we're, we're building there. Thank you.
Julia, you wanna speak for a second time?
Yes, I will also follow up, Dave, question is, um, we need to build this, uh, water fountain according to ADA, you know, uh, specification, and, and even though we have other water fountain close by, but remember that the kid that they are gonna use, there's some of them that are in wheelchair, on walkers, you know, so we want someone that is more accessible and close to the playground. Um, the one that is, the one there, one behind the, the Chris Kid Crossing, but is, is no way to go there, it's too far, and, and there is no good connectivity with the path, um, is in a grassy area, that one, um, and the other one is close to the splash pad, um, but the same, we need to find a, um, in order to, uh, reach out, uh, the design that we have right now is, there is gonna be a bike path connected to the splash pad, but through the west side, so people with wheelchair, they need to go, kind of like, inside the splash pad to get access to the water fountain, so it's not convenient.
And I, I guess I'll take a turn, just real speak, I know that there's a lion by the Kids Crossing, but that's definitely not accessible for someone in a wheelchair, that's not accessible for someone with a big head like me. You already spoke twice, unfortunately.
Oh, but there's some.
So, uh, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we can take a vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman? Shannon, are you there?
Is it me?
Yep, Shannon.
I said aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Yeah, we got you, Shannon, now.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, next is number twenty, Gabriela.
Yeah, so, um, after the conversation with Bill at the last meeting, uh, he seemed confident that the department can handle the workload, and that was why I brought the forward amendment, so in, uh, in light of that, I would like to withdraw amendments twenty through twenty-five.
God bless you.
Oh, I still wanna talk about all of those.
So that's included, number twenty-five?
Yes, all of, all the, all, all the rest.
All right, excellent, uh, then the omnibus ones, uh, do you want us to do those now? Okay, so you want Randy, his... Uh, do you want us to do those now? Okay, so, should you want Randy, his finance chair, to do these? Alright, Randy, it's all you.
Motion to approve omnibus amendment number A, update debt service amounts based on actual twenty-twenty-one issuance.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like Misty to take this one?
Misty is going to take all of them.
And I'll go quick, I promise. So, as you guys know, we approved the debt issuance today. The tax levy amount is the same as what was included in the mayor's budget, so we don't have to adjust that. However, the TID nine piece was a little bit different, and the premium is being used to pay for the interest cost for the first couple of years, so there's some budgetary nuances that I need to correct in the document. So, I would like permission, granted you don't see the actual numbers, but would like permission to just make those corrections based on what you adopted earlier.
Alright, any questions for Misty? Or comments?
Does, does, does giving her permission require an amendment?
Well, unfortunately, yeah.
It does?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's included in this amendment, sorry. Alright, we can go ahead and vote then.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excellent, alright, next one, Randy.
Motion to approve omnibus amendment number B, uh, adjust for refuse and recycling rate approved by resolution, if different.
Second?
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, Misty?
So, either the last meeting or the meeting before, council approved a rate that was different than what was included in the mayor's proposed budget, so instead of the two-twenty, it was approved at two-fifteen. So, that means I need to reduce the revenue budget amount by twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to match.
Alright, any questions? Alright, we can go ahead and vote. Oh, Julie, sorry, Julie has a question.
So, uh, um, the twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollar is going to be, you need to adjust the revenue stream, but it's going to affect the utility rate revenue? It's not going to affect levy?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Uh, so, correct, not, doesn't affect levy, um, but it's not a utility rate either, it's that special charge that's on the tax bill. So, council already set the charge, now we're just making the budget match the charge that was set.
Oh, because we had taken the money for, oh, we.
Taken, yeah, we had reduced last meeting, I think, and so we just want to make sure that it matches. Alright, go ahead and vote. Tracy?
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excellent, uh, next one, Randy.
Omnibus, motion to approve omnibus amendment number C, C, adjust for transfer out of fund balance ERP strategy.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and Misty?
So, as identified on the form, I would like permission to be flexible with this one as well. Uh, we still have a lot of uncertainty with the Department of Revenue about what expenditure restraint adjustment they will allow me. I've submitted at least a draft of what my request will be, but I have not heard back from them about kind of where their thinking is. Um, so C and D are kind of the opposite ends of that coin. So, if they allow me an adjustment that's more than what I need to meet the requirements based on what you guys adopt tonight, uh, then we will use adjustment, or omnibus C, to make sure we don't lose that capacity in the future. And then if we don't get as much of an adjustment as I expect that we need to pass, or to meet what we passed tonight, uh, then at that point, we might as well move FAC TV over to the general fund, uh, to build that base for the following years. So, these are kind of the opposite ends, depending on how my further conversations with the Department of Revenue go. And I would like permission by this council to be flexible on those amounts, and to make it happen based on the spirit of these amendments.
Questions at all? Uh, Julia?
So, do you have a ballpark number, or how this number can be, you know?
No, so I requested an adjustment from the Department of Revenue in excess of what we are required, or what we need to, to meet expenditure restraint. So, if they say yes to all of those, we'll be fine, and then we'll do that transfer like we've done the other years. Uh, based on conversations they've had with Madison and other meetings I've been at, I don't know how realistic it is to expect them to approve all of my adjustments that I'm requesting, but I couldn't tell you where their head is, as far as what they do and do not plan to approve. So, it's very uncertain, and I realize that's uncomfortable, uh, but unfortunately, if we want to try to qualify for the program, which I think we should, it's six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll get from the state. I think we should try to qualify for it if we can, but if we can't, we also need to be able to hire all these positions for the town.
Anyone else? Alright, go ahead and vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, and next one, Randy.
Yes, the motion to approve omnibus amendment D, reclassifying FAC TV from a special revenue fund to the general fund ERP strategy, you did it? Okay.
Second.
Signed by Jay, Misty?
Basically, what we talked about, the only thing I'd like to clarify is we are not changing FAC TV's composition, or budget allocations, or anything. All that this really does is it changes the accounting for them. Um, so when Jeremy pays bills, so the first three numbers of the account number are different, other than that, there's really no impact to the levy or to FAC TV's budget.
Alright, any last questions? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, so, we are through the amendments. I know that we're a little bit over where we need to be. Uh, we were going to take like about a five-minute break, so people can use bathrooms, get a drink, there's a few snacks for people here in the break room, we can get you in there if you don't have your pogg. Misty is going to work on the exact amounts, and think about what you might want to reconsider to reduce those funds, or, I guess, one way or the other. When we come back, I'll go down the line, and I guess, starting with District One down, and just ask what amendments people want to reconsider, and get that whole list, and then we'll go through them in the same order of the amendments as well. But I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to say whatever one they want to, um, reconsider. Question?
I have a very specific proposal for what we could reconsider, uh, and I, is it possible for me to make the proposal to the council and make the argument for reconsidering four specific amendments to, to fix the levy overage? I can do that in the argument later. I, I just would really like the opportunity to at least make an argument for what I would, what I think would work.
Yeah, Misty?
I would appreciate a recess anyways, I could stretch my legs and use the bathroom, so if we could still recess for a moment, I will double check the numbers, obviously, it should be relatively simple, but I can then provide the tax rate increase as well, so that people have a bearings, and then I think we could roll into the, the next step.
Sounds good. Alright, so, uh, we will take a five-minute recess, so you can do whatever you need to do, and we'll be back shortly. Why don't you give us an update on where we're at?
Absolutely. So, for those of you that are playing from home, I'd like to go through which ones were approved, so I won't talk about the rest of them, just the ones that were approved. So, number three, which removed the vehicle use reimbursement from certain departments, was approved. The, number seven, which was directing staff to include the police small equipment replacement fund documentation and future budget documents, was approved. The adding the funding for sustainability planning, number ten, was approved. Number fourteen, the increase of the paid-on-premise paid-on-call firefighter starting wage was approved. Number fifteen, the two-speed feedback boards at Seminole Highway and Schubman Drive was approved. The hearing conservation program was approved, that's number eighteen. Uh, number nineteen, the water fountain at the inclusive playground was approved, and then all four omnibus amendments were approved. Uh, so after that, I'm not going to focus on expenditure restraint, because we all know that I don't know the answer to that right now, but for property taxes, what that means is we are thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars over levy limits. Uh, that works out to, so if an adjustment is made, that doesn't necessarily take out levy limits, uh, that would equate to a three-point-two-six percent increase from last year on the average home, uh, which would be an eighty-three-dollar increase.
I just have one clarification, I guess. We came in being like twelve or thirteen thousand, kind of
Available.
On the plow, available, right? I thought the water fountains weren't hitting tax levy though.
They aren't. So, it's the nine-hundred-and-fifteen-dollar takeout, a twenty-five-thousand add, almost eleven-thousand add, a ten-thousand add, and a sixty-five-fifty add. So, it was a total add of fifty-one-five-seventy-four, less the twelve thousand that was available. Did you just agree?
I guess I missed, so. But isn't number three adding to the plus?
Yes.
And then we've got twenty-five, eleven, ten, and seven? And that adds up?
So, the, the four adds?
Yep.
Add up to fifty-two, four-eighty-nine, and then subtract the nine-fifteen, which was the takeout, and then subtract the capacity that was included in the mayor's budget, the twelve thousand.
The nine, wait, subtract what, nine-fifteen?
The number three, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
Oh, that was only, oh, I thought it was twenty-two thousand, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking. On the spreadsheet I printed off, number two is labeled number three, as well as number three.
Yes, I noticed that while we were in the meeting, sorry.
That's why I got confused, gotcha. Sorry. That's where my confusion, okay, so I will just go down through the districts, uh, I think, everyone's got to get a chance to say it, but I think you can say that as part of but we can't really discuss it, is the issue?
That's fine, I just like want to make a
Okay, we can start with District Two, we'll start with District Two, why don't you, give us what you want?
Thank you. Um, I propose that we revisit number four and number five, oh, sorry, number four and number six, which are reductions. And then we revisit number eleven and number twelve, which are increases. And if we passed all of those, we would be able to pay for all the amendments we already passed, the two, um, the firefighter lieutenant promotions and the urban forester from point six to point eight. And we would reduce taxes by seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
So, you're proposing four, six, eleven, and twelve. Alright, Julia, is there anything additional that you would like to review?
District Two worked together, and we are on the same page.
Alright, I'll go with District One. Uh, Dave, is there anything additional that you'd like to reconsider?
Um, no, I'd like to reconsider number, uh, ten. I have a different idea way we could do that than one cost us, cost us anything.
Alright, number ten. Uh, Jill, is there anything additional that you'd like to reconsider?
I wouldn't, no.
Alright, Jay, is there anything that you'd like to reconsider?
List now?
Four, six, ten, eleven, twelve.
I would like to add number, uh, eight to the, to the pile.
Alright, number eight. Shannon, anything additional that you'd like to add?
No.
No, alright. Jim, anything additional that you want to add to the list?
No.
Randy, anything additional you'd like to add to the list?
Uh, number six, I'd like to reconsider whatever the difference is between the ones that had
We'll just, we'll get to that, it's just number six, but we already got that list, so nothing additional on the list?
Nothing additional.
Alright.
Oh, can I?
You got another one that you want to reconsider?
Yeah, I know, another one that I forgot, number, I want to bring back number eight.
Yeah, that's on the list now.
Oh, okay, silly, okay.
Alright, so, we're going to reconsider four, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, and we'll go in the same order. And so, we'll start with number four. Uh, Gabriella, would you like to, to motion that one?
Yeah, I move reconsideration of amendment number four, remove South Stoner Prairie neighborhood planning.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and, wait, hold on, for this, do people only have one chance to speak, Misty? Uh, make sure we do this right now.
Correct, so each person can only speak once, and it's a total of five minutes, just like before.
Okay, alright, so would you like to use your one chance to speak now, Gabriella?
Yeah, I will. Um, so, we all spoke very passionately about sustainability planning, which I was very pleased by. I do truly believe that sustainability planning has to come before an expansion. And I think that some of these things that we passed tonight are important to have in the budget now, not least because we can't use them as one-time expenses. This is a one-time expense that can wait. We push it for, um, six months, and in the meantime, we reduce the tax levy by seventy-five thousand, and we do not have to use all of that, like, we can, we can lower taxes right now, if we wanted to, um, so, and, and not lose anything. I, I strongly urge you to reconsider, and I think it's worth it to, to pass some of these, these reconsidered amendments.
Anyone else want to speak? Jay?
Yeah, I guess the only, um, thing I really want to add is that there is absolutely no reason that I can think of, given, uh, stuff that's going to be happening over the next year or two, that this needs to be paid for out of the general fund. There's absolutely no reason for that, we have other ways, other funding mechanisms that we can use. This is a neighborhood plan, it, it just simply doesn't have to be done that way, so, I don't know why, I don't know why there's a, a strong insistence that that's how it'd be funded, but, um, I, I don't understand it.
Alright, anyone else? Uh, Dave, go ahead.
No, number four, wasn't that changed to, uh, uh, to be delayed? Wasn't, didn't we change the wording of that amendment?
We did change the wording, uh, yeah, so
I misspoke when I, when I redid it, yeah.
So, then, assuming the amendment is to delay, yes, okay, sorry, yes, so the amendment on the board is to reconsider the delay of this one, correct. Is, sorry, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off, though. Are you done? Alright, good. Alright, anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Alright, seeing no one else, we can reconsider the delay of number four.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
That passed now?
Motion carried, yep.
Alright, so, number four is now approved, so that would cut, it's actually seventy-five grand, because of the half of the one-fifty was to the city contribution, and the other half was, uh, getting it from landowners. Alright, so now to number six, and Julia, do you want to?
Yes. Um, I move approval of amendment number six, reconsideration to reduce the levy limit adjustment strategy earmarked for future capital expenditure.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and would you like to speak to this one?
Yeah, I think that Misty, and myself, and some people here already spoke, this one is going to be another one that we can, uh, we can, uh, the, um, we can fund, uh, the one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar, um, expenditure capital with, um, with other sorts of funding, uh, with the TID closure, um, um, so I think we'll remove it from the levy, um, because it's one-time capital expenditure, we are freeing up the levy, and we can, we can, um, you know, uh, fund the, the fire, um, the day, uh, daytime, um, firefighter, um, and then at the same time reducing, um, taxes.
Alright, Randy, go ahead.
I, I'd like to offer an amendment to this, to number, uh, actually, I have my numbers correct?
Number six here?
To number six, the, uh, for To number six. The, uh, for, for the total amount of amendment ten, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen, which I come up with sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. I'd like to amend the, uh, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine hundred, less this amount.
So you're saying that instead of taking out the entire thing, you just want to do roughly sixty thousand dollars, and that covers?
Could cover. If, yes.
It covered what, can you also?
Yeah, can you repeat which ones you're trying to cover?
Amendment ten, amendment fourteen, amendment fifteen, amendment seventeen, and amendment eighteen.
Alright, so hold on, hold, hold on, so I'm gonna read through it. Uh, and I guess it's not technically part of it, the, you can't approve ten, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen as part of this. So it's reducing
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount by sixty grand.
I'm just strictly speaking to the amendments that would cover, that would total that dollar amount.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Uh, is there anything else that you'd like to speak to this, for your one chance to speak?
No.
Alright. So, and so just for the public at home, ten is sustainability planning. Fourteen is what we already approved is the increase in the pay for the on-call firefighters. Fifteen is the one we already approved, which is the speed feedback boards. Seventeen is the, uh, sustainable vegetation pilot in the street medians. And then eighteen is the already approved conservation program. Now, again, some of those are, I mean, that's just kind of where you got the dollar amount, I guess. But, alright, so is there a second to the amendment to reduce this amount by essentially making the amount sixty thousand?
Sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine is those amendments added together. I did not subtract out the negative one, and I did not subtract out the levy limit capacity was, that was already there. So just those amendments he listed.
Sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Alright, is there a second to that amendment? Hearing, oh, second?
I'll second, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, Dave seconded, alright.
For the vote.
Alright, uh, Gabriella?
I, I'm gonna direct this mostly to Misty and hoping that you can comment on it. So this amendment doesn't change the taxes, no matter what we do with it, up or down. Because it's an assumption that Misty is making about how we're gonna move our money around with the, with the town of Madison annexation, how we have to move money amount to, to make the tax levy work. So, if the cost we're moving, the one-time cost we're moving is the police body cameras, I don't think it makes sense to only partially move it. Because if we're gonna fund it through a one-time closure of the TID, we're gonna fund the whole amount. Um, I I just would encourage you to, um, I, I, I really think we should strongly consider a couple of the other staffing positions. You know, I respect if we don't wanna add a full daytime career firefighter, but I think there've been strong arguments for the urban forester and the lieutenant. And I just, if we're gonna delay some of it, there's no reason why we shouldn't delay the whole chunk and then fund it through the TID. You know, it's not, it gives us a little bit more room to work with, and you can't partially pay for body cameras, you have to use the whole amount. So, I, I'd encourage you to keep it at the, the original one seventy-three, nine hundred, and and pass it as is. Cause even if we lowered it, it's not gonna like, it's not gonna change taxes at all, so. Misty, could you comment on the fact that? Can you just explain this again?
Misty, go ahead.
So, you're correct. So, whether we approve this amendment at the sixty-two thousand dollar number, the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar number, that alone doesn't increase taxes. What it allows you to do, though, is increase taxes up to the amount of what that adjustment is. The council would have to choose whether to elect to do that, and then which of the amendments they would choose to, to backfill it. So, I think that part of it is, is absolutely accurate.
And you could make it half. I mean, it's kind of a strategy, whether you do or don't, but that, you could, you can't, it's not like you can't, but it, it's, it's weird.
Yep, and, sorry if I may, uh, we do have a, another strategy that we use, so if there ever is levy limit capacity kind of left on the table after this process, there is a strategy I use, so we never have to worry about losing it. So, if we did do the whole amount and we left a hundred thousand dollars of capacity, as an example, it's not like we would lose that the following year.
Alright, Jay?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I also don't understand the logic of, um, just taking a part, a part of this. We, we have the capacity to use, this is a one-time expenditure. We have the capacity to fund that through, that entire one-time expenditure, through a different funding mechanism. And that seems to make sense. Especially given the fact that we need staffing positions that we can't fund through one-time, through one-time revenues. So, I, I don't see the, I, I don't understand the rationale behind, um, behind partially, uh, shifting this. I, I think we either do the whole amount or we don't.
Anyone else? Alright, so first is voting on the amendment, which is changing the dollar amount to sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Eratafrada?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
No.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
No.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Tie a vote.
Aye.
Amendment carried.
Alright, um, on to number eight.
We still have to.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, main emotion, sorry.
Alder Allen?
Hmm.
What we're voting on? What we're voting, what we need to vote?
No.
Alder Radafrada?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried, six-two.
Alright, now we can go to number eight, sorry about that. Um, Julia, that is yours. Number eight.
Eight, one second. Okay, so this one is to, um, reconsider the amendment to add, uh, one additional daytime career firefighter.
Second.
Sent by Jay, would you like to speak to it now?
No, I think we already spoke too much. Um, I think we need to, uh, yeah, uh.
So are you speaking or not?
Yeah, I will, I would really like to, uh, the council reconsidered and, and, and bring back this position, and we, we gave the, the staffing needs that the fire department currently have.
Alright, Jay?
Yeah, as mentioned before, the fire department probably needs two right now. Um, this is only to do one. If we wait another year, or we wait another two years, then they're gonna need three or four. And I, you know, I, the strategy of kicking stuff, kicking the can down the road, just doesn't really work in real life, because eventually those chickens come home to roost.
Alright, anyone else? Seeing no one else, go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie a vote?
No.
Motion failed.
Alright, on to number ten, that is sustainability planning. Gabriella?
Just a second while I.
Yep.
So, I mean, this passed, oh, gosh, I'm just looking back at my notes. This passed seven-one, just a few moments ago. I think it was, it's, it's clear that I think the council supports it. Based on my calcul-, my, just back of the envelope calculations with the offsets we just passed, and with what's potentially left to go, there's plenty of room in the levy limit to do this. So, if seven out of eight of us support it, and there's room in the levy, I would encourage you to pass it, cause there's no reason not to.
Did someone second it, sorry?
What?
Did you?
Are we on nine or ten?
Number ten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we aren't, we aren't redoing nine.
I move, yeah.
Try first, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So move from number ten, add funding for sustainability planning.
Alright, same idea, sorry. Alright, so this is.
I'm sorry, what's taking place?
This is reviewed, this is, so we had passed number ten, but it was asked to reconsider this one. And so, Dave, go ahead.
But, just like that, you know, I, I'm not opposed to this, but I, I think we have a lot of smart people in the city, and one, one very passionate alder. And we could have a citizen committee that could come up, that could work and put this together, and, and then run it past council, that we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to dedicate funds to. I would rather do that, and it's, you know, a citizen thing, you know, we, we have, you know, you see the passion in the city. I, I think you'd probably find fifty people that would wanna be on that, be on that committee. So I, that's what I would prefer we do with it, and we're below the levy limit, God bless us, you know?
Alright, anyone else wanna speak to it? Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there's just, there's just certain things that you don't volunteer out, and I think, you know, uh, I've gone through a, a program, sustainability program, and the, the things that it takes to, you know, really understand that type of work, um, I, I think it's something we wanna give, give to professionals.
Alright, that's, you know, Julia, go ahead.
So, I, I want to understand, uh, what Dave said, that he wants to have volunteer plant the trees? Or do some of Anna work?
Finish your comment, cause you can't, can't speak yet. So this is a sustainability plan, and he suggested that, uh, citizens kinda commit, do something, get together to create the plan instead. So this had passed originally. Alright.
This is ten.
This is number ten, yep.
Oh, I thought we were nine, okay.
Alright. Seeing nothing else, so, if you wanna, we voted yes on this previously, so if you wanna still vote yes on it, you would say aye on this one. So, go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Is this one, is it, okay, aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado? Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven-one.
Passes again, alright, on to number eleven. Uh, Julia, that is you.
Oh, um, eleven, okay. So the eleven is, um, is to, um, uh, approve amendment eleven. Uh, is increase the urban forester position from point six to point eight full-time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. Would you like to speak your one time now, Julia? Would you like to wait?
I have, I want to wait.
Wait. Anyone else? Gabriella?
Uh, so, you've heard me go on and on about this, but here's the thing, this is twenty-three thousand, one eighty-nine. We have more than enough room in the levy at this point. I, I cal-, I calculated, cause we've got two more amendments to consider. Um, if we pass both of those amendments, we will still be under the levy by fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Which means that we're actually, what is it, forty thousand dollars lower than we were to start um, with, with the mayor's proposed budget. So I think I've made a strong argument for the data behind why this position is needed. That's why I brought back the lower amount, just point six to point eight, rather than the full amount. We have room in the levy, it's really needed. Actually, when I was talking to the, the firefighters, I talked about the neighborhood plan, and the two positions that were the longest overdue were the assistant director of public works, which we've added, and the forester increase in hours. So it's really, it really is now, it's really the longest one that hasn't had an increase. So, we have the money. The need is there. Please pass this.
Anyone else wanna speak to this one? Alright, seeing no one else, we can go ahead to a vote to increase the forester, uh, natural position from point six to point eight.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Nay.
Alder Udell?
Uh, no.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Tie a vote?
I'll say yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, and the last one is number twelve. Uh, Julia, that is yours as well, if you'd like to do the motion for it.
Um, so this one is to, um, approve amendment twelve, is the add the reclassification for the three full-time firefighters to lieutenants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jay, and anyone wanna speak? Jim?
Yeah, this is one I'm gonna, um, probably, I'm going to change my mind on this one. I think when we look at supervision, we, we gotta take that seriously. One of the things that I look at for supervision is liability issues. And if we're gonna have pretty much, um, people who are not full lieutenants, or we need more lieutenants, I, I think we're just looking at, um, could have problems down the road. And I'm a big supporter of have a supervision to reduce liability and to get these guys paid what they're doing.
Anyone else wanna speak? Randy?
Yeah, I think Jim makes, uh, some valid points. Um, I'm gonna switch my vote on this as well.
Anyone else wanna speak to this one? Uh, Julia, and then Gabriella, go ahead, Julia.
Uh, what I want to mention is we still have plenty of, you know, room to approve this position, so.
Oh, buzzers, sorry, too late, we gotta leave. No, just kidding. Uh, Gabriella? They got a call. Go ahead, Gabriella.
Oh, sorry, I, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming out and making the argument, so. That's, that's really all. I, I think, I think it's a good move, and I appreciate people changing their votes to make this happen, because we have the money.
Alright, seeing no one else that wishes to speak, we can go to a vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Seven-one, motion carried.
Alright, that is all of the six that had been asked to be reconsidered. I will let Misty give us a final calculation, but I believe we are now in a good position, but I'll let her verify that. Go ahead. If you know already, Misty, go ahead.
I think I'm ready. Um, so, with that, we do have extra capacity in the levy limits, about fifty-two thousand dollars that we will carry over to next year. Uh, and then the tax rate, the assessed value tax rate will be seven dollars and ninety-three cents. That's an increase of three point one five percent, or eighty dollars on the average home.
If I may interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Valerie, please do.
Hey, we're getting close to eleven o'clock, so perhaps we can continue the meeting here.
I move to extend the minute, meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
Sent by Jay, all in favor of extending the meeting for thirty minutes, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. Excellent, thank you, Valerie, I forgot about that one. Alright.
So I'll have to be here for thirty more minutes?
Well, hopefully not, but we'll see.
We, we wanna be, we wanna be in your presence for thirty, Jay.
Um, Misty, do we do closing statements before or after the vote?
Before.
Before the vote, alright, so we can do closing statements regarding the twenty-twenty-two budgets. And, uh, we can go just down the line with district one first. Uh, Dave, anything you'd like to comment about? And we can go just down the line with district one first. Uh, Dave, anything you'd like to comment about?
I would, I would just add, I, I feel like three point one five, I, I would have preferred that we are closer between one and a half and two percent increase, given if you have gone to a grocery store, which I know all of you have, purchased any meat, uh, any groceries, you've seen how much that's gone up, your fuel prices, I, I think we're squeezing our residents. I have a, I have a neighbor, she's told me she's gonna have to go to a reverse mortgage now because of increased inflation and she asked me to try to keep her in her home, you know, she'd like to live there as long as she can, so. Um, I appreciate the, I appreciate everyone, you know, their, their diligence, uh, solutions, looking at these things hard. I'll, I'll go back to, uh, many years ago, I was selected to go to Badger Boys State and the thing I came away with most, a representative talked and he said, the most important vote you cast is in a local election. Because that's the only place where there's a direct tie between the taxes you pay and the services you receive. And my, you know, my neighbors and, and my, and my, in my district, they're saying, you know, we want a good value for the tax dollars we're paying and we'd like it to, you know, we'd like to stop the rise. So I'd like it a little lower, but I, I can, I can live with what we have here. And again, thank you all, your council members for civility and, and getting through this tonight.
Alright, Joe, go ahead, if you'd like to say anything.
Yeah, I would. Um, so, you know, one, I appreciate um all the alders, particularly the ones who have really um, taken the diligence to make amendments, um, to be able to, you know, go with a fine comb, fine-tooth comb through the budget and really um propose things that match their values and what they want to see in the city. Um, we were elected to work, um, we were elected to pay attention and um, I'm just, you know, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, um, I, I really value this council. Uh, for that reason, and the second reason being that, you know, despite disagreements, um, having been on the council last year versus this year, I've seen it start difference. Um, there's just a really um high level of collegiality. I know we had a little tense, some tense moments in this meeting. Um, but just the, the ability I've seen of this council to just be able to parse through the details and still be civil with one another is a testament to um, you know, it, 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 it means even more considering the political climate that we're in in the United States. So I um just want to say that I appreciate working with you all. I'm glad we were able to um come to some agreements um, and, you know, negotiate this out while still lowering taxes for us um, and investing in really importantly needed um, you know, staffing adjustments and, and investments in um the future of our city.
Alright, thank you. Julia?
So um, so I want to thank you everyone, uh, all my fellow alders, if I, you know, I am a Latina, Italian in my blood, I have, so I, I don't take, sometimes I am very passionate about the issue that I really, really care. So if I, somewhere you felt like I, you know, I attacked you, it wasn't my intention at all, is, you know, I, I am passionate for the thing that I am fighting and sometime maybe um, you know, it can sound like I am, you know, being aggressive, but on the contrary, I am very passionate and I, I, I spend a lot of time going through the budget to bring the amendment that I brought to you. Um, I am very happy because um, I will say that um, I have almost five and a half amendment passed that I brought. So I want to thank you for supporting my, the amendment. Uh, we are supporting our staff, we are supporting um, um, uh, in approving this amendment and, and also I am disappointed that the, the additional daytime career firefighter didn't pass. Uh, I take your word, Jim. You said the next year you're gonna fight for this position. Um, I hope we fight together for next year and I want to bring it back next year, so. Um, but I think that um, I, I think that it's good that we disagree, you know, as a council. We, we have different voices, diversity of voices is very important. So, uh, and I think we, we have done it with respect and, you know, and, and, you know, and I think that um, uh, we can continue bringing, um, moving the city forward with new ideas, initiative and, and looking at the big picture.
Thank you. Gabriella?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I'm proud where, where we landed on this. Um, so thank you all for, for coming along with me and, and reconsidering things and changing your votes um when you thought it was appropriate. Um, I'm, I'm very passionate about the things that I brought forward. It's, I think it's very clear to me, I, I start tearing up. I'm a very emotional person and um, I like wear my emotions on my sleeve, so that's, you know, that's, that's just who I am. And um, environmental responsibility, preparing for climate change are things that are very near and dear to my heart. And um, I think that we're a step closer to where I'd like the city to be. I think the sustainability plan is, is potentially transformational. And I know that sounds like a big word, but I truly believe that this process will make this city resilient in a changing world. And um, and as someone who cares deeply about the city, I know you all care deeply, you wouldn't be sitting here if you didn't care deeply about the city. Um, I think this will make our city stronger going into the future and make us better able to cope with what's coming. And I, I will, I do plan to hopefully bring some more funding for it um in the TID closure, so keep an eye out for that. Um, and I also just want, you know, the urban forester increase, you know, I, I wanted to go to full-time, but I think point six to point eight is big. It's a lot more time per week, with three days to four days a week, that's huge. Um, and our forester is already extraordinarily good at her job and making do with the time that she has. And she's gonna be able to do a lot more this year because of this, so um. Thank you.
One of the things that happened when I first got elected to the council a long time ago was there was a program called COPS, which was uh community-oriented policing that, uh, that was funded partially by the federal government. Um, and what happened with that is the government would give us money, the federal government would give us money to fund police officers for three years, but after that, we had to keep them on or we had to pay the federal government back. This is our dreaded structural deficit. It was definitely a structural deficit and we applied for that program twice and we got it twice. And then we had to fund those police officers fully uh when they came along. In the uh, in the mid nineties, uh, I was on the EMS commission and I made the argument and somehow managed to convince the city of Verona and town of Verona that we made, needed to make a massive investment in our EMS to go from basic level paramedics or intermediate level paramedics to, or intermediate EMTs to paramedics. And that switch to paramedic service was a game changer for a lot of what we have done, what, what we've been able to do, the lives that we have saved, um, the, the, the training that they have, the professionalism they have when they show up at somebody's house. Um, and then when, when Mark Vivian proposed uh going with uh six full-time firefighters, I sat here, actually down there, and argued very strongly uh that that's what we needed to have happen and, and it got funded. So this would normally be the point in a meeting, had, had I been still in my, the mindset that I was in fifteen years ago, where I would decry the council for failing to fund a firefighter and I would come up with all sorts of clever little quips and, and I would then proudly declare that I was going to vote against the budget. I'm not gonna do that tonight. Um, there was a, there, there was a work, there was some work that was done here. And while I think the fire department desperately needs some help, they got a little bit tonight, it's not enough. But as we come back in the future, I hope that we will correct this and, and get the department to the place that it needs to be. So I will support the budget tonight, I appreciate all the work that was done. I um, I think Joe made some good comments earlier about uh, you know, us working together, trying to get along, even though we don't agree on everything. Uh, but we came up with, with, with what I think is a reasonably good product. So I hope everyone does vote for it.
Alright, thank you. Shannon?
I got nothing.
Alright, Jim?
Yeah, I thought it was a good process. Um, I've seen Julia play soccer, so um, I know she can really get um passionate, but it's appreciated. Uh, also appreciate your um passion, Gabriella, and, and your knowledge and, you know, keeping us thinking about those things that, you know, affect the whole city. Um, I appreciate you, Misty, you know, a lot of work goes into putting this budget together and, you know, the value that um added to us is that your sage advice and everything, that you really bring a lot um, to my knowledge at least, of getting through this budget process. I will reiterate, yes, I will be um, uh, meeting with fire department and the pledge I made is the pledge I will keep. Um, but I also do, my belief is that we must continue to think about basic services as we move ahead and as we grow a city. I, I just look at it as, don't, you know, those should be the first priority um in a city, public safety, public works and our employees. And I will keep to that, so I thought it was a good process, thanks.
Randy?
Yeah, I would agree, it is, it is, it was a good process. Um, I'm pleased with the, you know, the three point one-five percent increase. And um, we, it, time was, there was a time there that was a little tense, but I think that just goes to show that uh when we work together, we take a step back and work together, we can all come together and come up with uh the same value that we're all here for and that's for the residents of Fitchburg. Yeah, that's about all I have to say.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, I just had a few comments. One, I just want to thank all of you for all the work you put into this and for your time. It's gonna be before midnight that we're done, which I don't know when the last time that happened was, maybe never. So thank you, I want to thank you, Misty, for all the work that you do going into all this as well, as well as all staff. I mean, all staff, all department heads spent a lot of time on this, you know, thank you Chad, it's your first time going through it on this end. Hopefully it wasn't too painful. But I just want to thank all of you and all staff as well for all that. And the hard thing about all this is these are all great ideas. I mean, there's nothing on this list I go, well, I, we shouldn't do that. It's hard to do all this stuff. There's always a lot more that we want to do and can't do. So, you know, I, I think that all these things are gonna continue to come forward. I think we'll eventually be able to get all these things done, even if we didn't get them all done tonight. And I talked about long-term planning a little bit in committee hole and that's something that, you know, I've committed to starting with the fire department, but I've talked to Chad about the entire city really needs to do a better job of long-term planning. I know that we're gonna work on that and continue doing that as well. Uh, but overall, I think, you know, we invested a lot in staff in this budget. I didn't go through and count the positions, but it's a lot. It's, it's by far the most we've ever done in a year. And I think that's great that we can do that. Um, and so I'm very excited about that piece as well. Other than that, I, I know the next step after we approve this, hopefully approve this, is, you know, there is a potential mayoral veto, but I'm not gonna veto anything in here, so I can just tell you that right now. Don't hold your breath, that's not happening, so that's all I have. So with that, we can do a final vote on the entire budget as approved.
We still have fifteen minutes, though.
Well, I could talk for more, I suppose, but. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Ratafratta?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excellent. Alright, next meeting is in a couple of weeks and then next committee hole is until January. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sent by Randy, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. Alright, thank you everyone.